Some members with a quorum physically present. This action is taken as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and the governor's orders regarding limiting of gatherings and staying in place during disaster. Electronic participation is encouraged and pursuant to the governor's emergency orders, masks and social distancing will be required for those physically present. If you choose to be physically present, you will be screened and authorized by staff for signs and symptoms of illness. Based on the results of that screening and/or number of members and staff, certain physical attendees may be denied entry. Following members are physically present. We have Mr. Kevin Myers, Mr. Josh Colwell, Mr. Gavro, Mr. DeVries, Mr. Williams, Mr. DJ Watkins. It's been awhile, sorry, we're a little rusty. Mr. Kendrick, and I'm, I'm sorry, Joe Decore, yes, and I'm sorry, and I believe electronically we have Ms. Tara Patterson. Okay. So we'll note, okay. So once we have her checked in, we'll... Okay. Chris, do we have Ms. Patterson online? Is Ms. Patterson checked in online? Okay, not yet, but we do, for the record, we do have a quorum. So at this point, if you are able, I'll ask those who are in attendance to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Please leave us some invitations.
With our heads. Heavenly Father, as we approach the throne of grace this evening, dear Lord, we ask that you be grateful with our hearts and guide our minds, dear Lord, as we go about the county's business, dear Lord, making our choices clear and precise and in the way in which you would have us to go. These and other blessings we pray. Amen.
This time, the next item before the commission is public comment. If anyone in the public wishes to address the planning commission, please come forward, state your name and address, and please leave your comp, please limit, excuse me, your comments to three minutes to afford everybody an opportunity to speak. One thing to note, this is not for the public hearing tonight, so this public comment period is for anything other than what we're going to discuss shortly. So anything other than what we have tonight, if there's anybody that wants to come forward, please do so now. Seeing that we don't have any folks, I will ask for review of the minutes of the 10 March 2020 meeting. And we will go through, it was a short meeting, so we will just go through page by page, starting with page one. Page two.
So, Mr. Chairman, on page two, the bottom bullet regarding Mr. Vice Chairman DeVries inquiring about what development means, did we get further details from DEQ or was that not required?
Yes, Mr. Pankati.
Did, did we get, so let's see, Mr. Pankati stated he will ask DEQ for further details. Did we get further details on that? So that's bottom page two, the last bullet.
All right, so that does mean the redevelopment of something that was already built inside of the RPA.
That's just the definition then?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thanks, Louis. Any additional comments on page two? We're reviewing the minutes of our last meeting. And page five? And if there are no comments, I'll ask for a motion of approval of the minutes of the 20 March meeting. Excuse me, 10 March meeting. Ma'am, these were of the 10 March meeting, they were nothing... Ma'am, I'm sorry. This, this isn't, ma'am, this isn't the way we conduct a meeting, and this has nothing to do with what we're here for tonight. It's not, ma'am, please, this is not how we conduct a meeting, this is not what you're here for tonight. I'm going to go again and ask for a motion from the planning commission for approval. Motion's been made. Motion's been made and segmented, all in favor?
Aye.
One abstention? Okay, sorry. Were there any abstentions? If Mr. Williams abstains, motion passes. All right. Onto the next item on the agenda is the Community Planning Liaison Officer, Naval Support Activity South Potomac. I don't see that that individual...
Chairman Parker, I believe that she is online. Chris, could you ask her if she has anything? Andrea Horning should be online. Okay, we'll have to move on.
Okay. Moving on, next on the agenda is the Plan Review, Hop Yard, Section 16, Tax Map 23, Parcel 77A.
Just a minute to bring that presentation up.
Turn it over to the planning office to speak to that.
Unfortunately, sir, that's the best the focus does, I really apologize. Okay, we have Hop Yard, Section 16, final plat.
Ma'am, ma'am, I'm going to ask you one more time, this is not, this is not how we conduct a meeting, okay? Yes, you will, you will, please, we have business to conduct, and we're... Then, okay, we're going to go and carry on with our meeting, okay?
We have Hop Yard Farms, Section 16, final plat, Tax Map 23, Parcel 77A, portion thereof. Zoning is multifamily dwelling unit, R3. Next slide. As you're aware, Hop Yard Farms is located on Port Conway. Unfortunately, I don't have a clicker, but this will go right behind Section 12, which is on the north side here on the map. Next slide. This is the first overall view of the plat for Hop Yard, Section 16, and this will be in a continuation of Emerald Drive off of Port Conway. Next slide. Here's the continuation of Emerald Drive and the proposed lots.
That means it's a fly down.
Next slide. This is where it ends, in the cul-de-sac on Shamrock Lane. Next slide. The zoning is proposed to be R3, or I'm sorry, the zoning is R3, are proposed to be developed in accordance with the residential cluster provisions of Article 11 of the zoning ordinance. They're proposing 63 single-family dwelling lots in Section 16. The proposed plat contains 29.6443 acres, subdivision will create 63 new lots and contains 26.7873 acres, and the plat will dedicate 2.7420 acres of right-of-way. The plat also proposes a common space as parcels LL and KK for a total of 12.1 acres. The minimum area requirements for cluster and a provision in R3 is a minimum lot size of 6,500 square feet with a minimum lot width of 60 feet and a minimum open space of 45%. Project is compliant with all of these requirements.
I'm wondering, like, hockey, like...
Yeah, but...
And I know they opened it up in public comments, that's what they did.
By proffer, 602.65 acres of open space is required, which exceeds the max, the 45% requirement. In Section 16, the common space will be 12.1278 acres. 473 acres and 473.84 acres is dedicated to date. Her preliminary plat, total proposed open space is 652 acres. Next slide. The final plat is compliant with erosion, sediment control, storm warning management. Is proposed of a extended detention pond, which will also provide quality control by reducing the peak discharge rate in the downstream natural channel. Construction of the roads will be VDOT roads, which has been reviewed and approved for this plat. Utilities will be provided by Public Water and Sewer of King George County Service Authority, which has been approved. This proposed subdivision does not contain wetlands or resource protection area. Next slide. The final plat meets all administrative requirements. The final plat is general conformance with the preliminary plat plan. VDOT has approved the plat as well as service authority. Next slide. The Department of Community Development recommends that King George County Planning Commission approve plat of subdivision Hop Yard Farms, Section 16. Do you have any questions?
Ms. Hall, can we have a look at Sheet 7 of the plat?
Of the plat?
Have we seen and approved the site plan?
I'm sorry, sir, could you repeat that?
Have we seen and approved the site plan for this section?
The construction plan has been approved, yes, sir.
On Sheet 7, was there a temporary turnaround at that stub at the end of Emerald Drive? The reason I'm asking is typically we see a temporary turnaround easement on the plat to accommodate the turnaround, the temporary cul-de-sac at a stub like that.
This one is actually stubbed out into the property next door.
Right, but is there a temporary turnaround proposed at that stub?
There will be on the construction plan and out. I believe if you look on Sheet 4, it does acknowledge the temporary turnaround there.
I see it, thank you.
Thank you.
Where do we stand with the proffers right now on this? Does this trigger any new proffers or...?
It does not, sir.
Commission, are there any, any questions among the board members?
Mr. Chairman, this is a continuation of Hop Yard. We've seen each section come through here. To me, as far as I can tell, it's consistent with all the prior sections. We've already approved the overall plan, so I would propose that this one is worthy of being approved as well.
Thank you, any other?
One, one question for me. Emerald Drive, now Emerald Drive goes all the way to their property line, right? This is the last piece?
Yes, sir.
On Emerald, okay, thank you, I agree on, this is all already been approved and...
Okay.
Probably move forward.
Is there any additional discussion? If not, then I will ask for a motion to approve and forward to the board supervisors?
If you don't forward these to the board, this is your approval, sir.
Okay, we'll just ask for a motion to approve then.
Chairman, I move that we approve Section 16, Hop Yard Farm for approval.
Motion's been made?
Second motion.
Been made and segmented, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Now, the next item on the agenda is that the King George County Planning Commission will hold a public hearing, which has been publicly advertised, to receive public input regarding case number 19-08-ZO3, request by PR Farm LLC to rezone with proffers Tax Map 9, Parcel 5, from Limited Agricultural District A1 to Resort Community District RC. Total project area is 332.32 acres. Master development plan proposes a resort community with temporary lodging for 900 occupants, including tent platforms, staff cottages for 18 occupants, chapel, an amphitheater, and other uses including special events for up to 440 people. Property is currently zoned limited agricultural, A1. The minimum lot size is agricultural zoning district is 10 acres. The requested rezoning is resort community. Per the King George County Comprehensive Plan 2019, the property is located in the Potomac River North Rural Development Area, and we'll first hear staff report from Mr. Louis Pankati.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning commission. I am Louis Pankati, planner, and I'll be presenting case number 19-08-ZO3. Next slide, please. Case number 19-08-ZO3 is a request by PR Farm LLC to rezone with proffers Tax Map 9, Parcel 5, from Limited Agricultural District A1 to Resort Community District RC. Total project area is 332.32 acres. The master development plan proposes a resort community with temporary lodging for 900 occupants, including tent platforms, staff cottages for 18 occupants, a chapel, an amphitheater, and other uses including special events for up to 440 people. The property is currently zoned limited agricultural, A1. The minimum lot size in the agricultural district is 10 acres. The requested zoning is resort community. Per the King George County Comprehensive Plan, the property is located in the Potomac River North Rural Development Area. Next slide, please. The current owner of the parcel is PR Farm LLC, and the 332.32 acre lot is located along Mathias Point Road. This parcel is located in the Potomac River North Rural Development Area and is zoned A2, or A1, limited agricultural. The requested zoning again is RC Resort Community. Next slide, please. This site is currently used for agricultural purposes. The lot does have access to the Potomac River and wetlands are present on the site. Next slide, please. The Resort Community District provides for resorts occupying relatively small to very extensive grounds of tract or tracts of land providing within the establishment related guest services facilities. Resort districts may be close to both residential and rural neighborhoods and will therefore provide regulations and site plan controls to protect the qualities of these neighborhoods. Development within the resort district will be designed in a manner that will protect and preserve natural resources, trees, watershed, contours, and topographic features of the land, and protect and enhance the natural scenic beauty of the property. This will be the first property to be zoned RC in King George County. Applications requesting zoning to RC require a master development plan. This section lists the requirements for such a plan, Section 2.13.4.1. These requirements include, among others, traffic impact analysis, proposed overall density, and a concept plan illustrating the location and functional relationship between all proposed land uses, including the type and extent of the development recreational and resort facilities to be provided. Next slide, please. Next slide. Yep. Section 2.13.5 of the zoning ordinance states that recommendations from the planning commission may include findings as to the suitability of the tract for this general type of development in terms of relation to the comprehensive plan or amending thereof, physical characteristics of the land and its relationship to the surrounding areas, the adequacy of in relation to major roads, utilities, public facilities, and services, the adequacy of evidence of unified control and suitability of the purposes, proposed agreements, contracts, deed restrictions, sureties, dedications, contributions guaranteed, or other instruments, or the need for such instruments, or for amendments to these proposed. The adequacy of evidence that reasonably projected costs of public services for the development do not exceed revenues reasonably projected to be generated by the development and specific modifications in the resort, community district regulations, the general zoning regulations, or the subdivision regulations as applied to this particular case based on determination that such modifications are necessary or justified by demonstration that the public purposes as applied by these regulations would satisfy to at least an equivalent degree by such modifications. Next slide, please. So now we'll take a look at the master plan. This plan shows the general layout of the buildings as well as the RPAs, the RPA areas, roads and trails, and the proposed uses. Next slide. The applicant proposes an amphitheater, art studio, boathouse, two dining halls, gym, a general store, infirmary, lodge, or laundry, three lodges, pool, poolhouse, bunk, eight bunkhouses, 15 cabins, four guest lodges, three staff cottages, a maintenance barn, a bath house, a service building, a guardhouse, playfields, 11 tent platforms, and a pump station. Activities are to include corporate retreats, day camps, food truck festivals, restaurant, ropes course, wedding ceremonies, receptions, archery, basketball courts, climbing walls, hiking trails, horseback riding, recreational facilities, volleyball, softball, tennis courts, and water sports. Next slide, please. The master development plan proposes 240.46 acres of unimproved open space, which is about 72% of the site, 23.4 acres of recreational open space, which would be about 7% of the site, and 68.37 acres of improved open space, which would be 20% of this site, and 5.11 acres of building area, which is about one and a half acres of the site. Next slide, please. The circulation plan includes a primary road that continues through the development and a network of secondary roads and walking trails as seen on the circulation plan. Next slide. Pursuant to Section 3.12.10, the applicant has requested that the amount of its parking be determined by the zoning administrator based on expected number of vehicles visiting the property during peak periods. As provided in Section 3.12.5, the applicant in conjunction with each site plan permittal, submittal, will provide information on the extent to which parking facilities will be used more than two days per week and seek paving waiver for parking spaces in excess of that number, allowing such spaces to be gravelled. Additionally, the applicant will provide field parking for up to 24 events a year whose requirements exceed the paved, whose requirements exceed the paved and gravelled spaces. The applicant shall not schedule simultaneous events which would reasonably generate parking in excess of that provided, or which would cause the field parking to be used more than 24 times a year, which then would require paved parking. The numbers approved pursuant to the plan are minimums, and the applicant may build more. Even though the applicant may have the right to provide gravel or field parking, the applicant may choose to increase the quality of parking. After Phase 1B, parking is provided so that a youth retreat and the largest event could overlap. Next slide, please. The development of this project will be phased over an estimated 25 years. Next slide. Phase 1A will include the guardhouse. Phase 1B will include a bath house, seven cabins, a staff cottages, and tent platforms. Phase 1C will include eight more cabins, a chapel, a dining hall, and five tent platforms. Next slide. Phase 2A will include a boathouse, eight bunkhouses, a gym, two guest lodges, one lodge building, a maintenance shed, and two staff cottages. Phase 2B includes the amphitheater, a dining hall, two guest lodges, a lodge building, and a pool. Phase C includes the art studio, a lodge building, a pool, and a poolhouse. Next slide. Events at the facility will also be phased as shown in the following table. In Phase 1C, special events will, such as weddings, will occur five times a year. Next slide. At total buildout, there will be 10 wedding events a year and three concert events. And that's in conjunction with things such as the youth retreats and adult retreats. Next slide, please. The master plan includes a buffer plan along the sides of the property. The buffer will be underserved and allowed to continue as a return-to forest except where it continues to be farmed. The applicant has put in trails and farm fences and will continue the existing powerline easement. Along Mathias Point Road, the buffer will be allowed to return to forest subject to continuing existing farming activities. When the applicant begins a parking area for the, for parking other than field parking for infrequent events, such parking will be screened with a brim or natural or vegetated, vegetation meaning the buffer standard. At the entrance, or the entrance road paths and utilities will go through this area as may fences. Mailboxes and one monument sign will be located in this area. Next slide. This map shows the buffer plan. Utilities for this site, water and sanitary sewer, are proposed to extend from the intersection of Chatham, Chatham Road and Owens, or Chatham Drive and Owens Drive onto Mathias Point Road and onto the site. Utility lines are intended to run along the main road that in laterals shall be extended from there. Cost of water and sewer extension to the site are an estimated $1 million. The master development plan includes a pump station to serve the site. After reviewing the flow updates and phasing for this project, the service authority approves the rezoning application and confirms capacity for this project. However, it shall be noted that being outside the primary settlement area, this project would need to be approved by both the service authority, Board of Directors, and the King George County Board of Supervisors. Dominion Energy Virginia will provide electrical service for the above referenced property in accordance with the applicable terms and conditions on file with and approved by the State Corporation Commission of Virginia. Next slide. This is a plan showing the extension of the sewer lines to the site. So since the site is located outside of the primary settlement area, which are the areas selected to be served by public water and sewer, Chapter 5 of the 2019 King George Comprehensive Plan lists policies and implementation strategies that include not extending or establishing water treatment or distribution system or wastewater treatment systems without a formal determination by the planning commission and Board of Supervisors that such facilities proposed are in accordance with the comprehensive plan in conjunction with the procedure set forth in Virginia Code, Section 15.2-2232. So that section of the Virginia Code states that unless a feature is already shown to be adopted on the master plan or part thereof, or is deemed so under subsection D, no street or connection to an existing street park or other public area, public building, or public structure, public utility facility, or public service corporation facility, other than railroad facility or underground natural gas or natural electric distribution facility of a public utility defined in subdivision B of Code 56-265.1, within its certified service territory, whether publicly or privately owned, shall be constructed, established, or authorized unless and until the general location or approximate location, character and extent thereof, has been submitted to and approved by the planning commission as being substantially in accord with the adopted comprehensive plan or part thereof. Next slide. So, based on that code of Virginia, you will need to determine if this extension of utilities is substantially in accord with the comprehensive plan. And the three criteria that is listed in the code are location, character, and extent. So, location, the property is approximately 1,125 feet from the Doggeren Settlement area. Currently, public utilities do not extend beyond this settlement area to serve Chatham Bill, or do currently extend beyond this settlement area to serve, to serve the Chatham Village subdivision and Westbury subdivision. The proposal is to extend the facilities from the intersection of Chatham and Owens Drive onto the site. Character, the development includes buffers, conservation, and few residences and little commercial activity in an attempt to retain the rural area in the character. And that's the extent the applicant is proposing, 91,800 gallons a day of average daily water demand and 78,030 gallons a day average daily wastewater demand. As you can see on this map, the site is approximately 1,125 feet from the Doggeren Settlement area. Next slide. The applicant has submitted a traffic impact analysis to the county and to the Virginia Department of Transportation. VDOT has determined that the TIA is in accordance with the minimum standards and has no objection to the approval of the application. However, the analysis showed that a right turn lane is warranted at the intersection of Routes 614 and 624 in the future, and the county may wish to consider this item for future publicly funded projects. Next slide. The following land use proffers were provided in support of the application. The actions proffered to, or proffered to improve the project could not otherwise be required by staff, or be required, and staff recommends that if the rezoning is approved, the land use proffer shall be accepted. The proper property shall be developed in accordance with the standards of the King George County zoning ordinance for resort community district, except the applicant shall not utilize the property for the following: time shares, units, golf courses and clubhouse, emergency service vehicles, multifamily and townhome units. And additionally, the property may be used for up to three single-family attached or detached houses for full-time employees for seasonal occupancy by temporary, part-time, or seasonal employees and the largest hotels and cabins. The applicant has requested that the property be served by public sanitary, public sanitary sewer and water, and the applicant shall be responsible for the cost of construction of said infrastructure. As part of the site plan submittal process, the capacity of the Chatham pump station will be confirmed, and if an upgrade of such station is reasonably necessary due to the development of the proposed site plan, then prior to commencing the improvements contemplated by such a site plan, the applicant shall pay the cost of such upgrade. As part of the master development plan, the applicant has provided its best approximation on timing of construction phases together with the anticipated water and sewer needs for each phase. While such timing projections are only estimate, the applicant recognizes the county may wish to use such estimates in its planning for capacity, and there is no assurance of capacity for earlier development of phases. Individual buildings shall be generally consistent with the architectural character shown in the Hope Retreat rezoning information booklet, and the applicant shall cluster, or cluster mailboxes on the property to provide access to mailboxes near the entrance of the product, project. Next slide. The applicant shall preserve a hundred-foot buffer along the edges of the property subject to the following. The buffer shall remain undisturbed along the northeastern and southwestern borders of the property, except for farming where it currently takes place, hiking, biking, horse riding, trails, farm or decorative fences, utility line extension along the Thias Point Road or along existing utility easements, and appropriate forest and field maintenance activities for the removal of dead trees or invasive plants. Along the Potomac River, the buffer shall be managed in accordance with the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act and the county's information thereof with access to water facilities, trails, and water, or view sheds, and appropriate forest maintenance as provided, or as permitted thereby. And along, and along the Thias Point Road, the buffer may continue in agricultural use where currently in such use be allowed to return to forest or planted or berm, but no berm shall be closer than 50 feet to Mathias Point Road to provide such screening, provided that prior to the use of the fields along Mathias Point Road for paved surface parking or parking in conjunction with other than periodic event parking not associated with the permanent facilities construction on the property, the applicant shall provide screening, either natural or constructed, for the view of parking areas from Mathias Point Road. A berm or semi-opaque vegetative screen will be provided, having only seasonal horizontal openings, not exceeding forty percent of the total width from the ground to the height of six feet within five yards of planting. This portion of the buffer may be disturbed to bring utilities to the property, build the entrance road, and any required intersection features thereof, provide appropriate forest and field maintenance activities for the removal of dead trees and invasive plants, and install farm or decorative fences, farm where it currently takes place, create hiking, biking, or horse riding trails, and install mailboxes as well as the monument signage for the project. Any gate or guardhouse located on the property shall be placed to allow arriving cars or buses to park and not stack into Mathias Point Road. Use of any gate restricting access to the property shall be coordinated with the county's emergency service providers so that they can have necessary access. Permanent plantings on the property shall be either native to the region or agricultural. Annual plantings may be agricultural or ornamental, providing that no plants on the Virginia invasive plant species list maintained, maintained by the Virginia Department of Conservation shall be planted on the property. In order to preserve the night sky and minimize disruption of wildlife migration and normal movement, the applicant shall utilize dark sky techniques and fissures, fixtures, including the following. Only areas that need to be lit will have lighting, lighting will only be on when needed. Lighting will not be brighter than is necessary for the activities to be undertaken. No feasible, or where feasible, only pathway lighting will be provided. Lighting will minimize blue emissions. Care shall be given to locate lighting to avoid wildlife trails and passages and unnecessary lights shining on the river. Outdoor events on the property that utilize amplified sound will cease use of speakers or other amplification no later than 10:00 PM and shall not commence such use of devices before 9:00, 9:00 AM, or no later than 10:00 PM and no earlier than 9:00 AM. Unless traffic controls have been installed at the entrance of the property, the applicant shall employ not less than one off-duty sheriff's deputy or other local law enforcement personnel or private personnel, and more if necessary, if reasonably necessary for public safety, to supervise the exit from the property onto Mathias Point Road of vehicles from special slash outdoor events at which 50 or more vehicles are expected to be leaving the event within a one-hour period. Before commencing the first site plan for uses intended in Phase 2B, the applicant shall complete a traffic study for the remainder of the phases of the master development plan and shall provide the entrance features made necessary by the applicant's development at such time as determined necessary by VDOT. The sign shall use some of the same materials and finishes as the building, including but not limited to stone, wood, metal, including court and steel, and generally of the characters signed, of the signage characters, examples provided in the master development plan. Any sign lighting shall be external, and the sign shall not exceed 12 feet in height. Event planning will be subject to the parking strategy implemented in each phase of the buildout, and the parking approved as part of the site plan for such phases. No event shall be scheduled such that total parking needs according to the parking tables exceed provided parking. Till bathhouses and shower sinks and toilets are installed in the tent areas, not more than six tent platforms shall be constructed or used for stays of more than two nights at a time. Such platforms shall not be utilized at all unless permanent or temporary toilets are provided near the platforms. The applicant will utilize security gates and access controls on the property. When events as large as youth retreats or larger occur on the property, both fire and EMS and police will be notified in advance. Site plans will clearly delineate asphalt, asphalt from gravel roads so service, services can plan their access throughout the site. Nine-one-one addresses and street names and alternative, clearly defined location delineation for all structures will be created as part of each site plan for clarity emergent, for emergency services. Applicant will coordinate with fire and EMS and police whenever possible and appropriate for standby service or supplement with private safety slash medical companies during events of more than 250 people. Internal church organized volunteer security and medical teams may be utilized instead. If the site plan includes buildings over three stories above ground, the applicant will coordinate with fire to arrange appropriate fire response, and applicant will provide any necessary design or equipment for such response, if not then utilized by fire. Applicant will provide a supplemental equipped for at least emergencies infirmary in the upper camp in addition to the full infirmary in the lower camp. In addition to the above stated voluntary proffers, the applicant understands and agrees that the applicant must be and remain in compliance with state and local law, including the ordinance of King George County, including but not limited to the following provisions. The property shall be developed materially consistent with the master development plan and only non-material adjustments to respond to topographical features and enable natural resource protection, provided however that the design of buildings shown on the master development plan is merely conceptual. Deviations from the master development plan shall be permitted in this site plan when the Director of Planning and Code compliance determines that such are necessary due to requirements of topography, drainage, structural safety, environmental permitting, or vehicular circulations, and such deviations will not materially alter the proposed development sequence. Such deviations shall be reported to the Board of Supervisors in writing, and in no case have such deviations substantially say, change the approved master plan, increase the density, or increase the floor area. Any changes not authorized by this paragraph shall require submission of the master development plan, or resubmission of the master development plan in accordance with the procedures contained in the King George County zoning ordinance. Property shall be used for the following uses that are described in the information booklet or listed below, provided that all the uses are permitted only in connection with the goals of addressing the spiritual and life needs of the development of individuals and organizations, whether for fees or not, or, and not for general commercial use. Next slide, please. Prior to submitting any site plans for any portion of the property, the applicant shall obtain a wetland delineation, US Corps of Engineers, Army Corps of Engineers confirmation of such delineation, a perennial flow determination study, and a county confirmation of perennial flow limits, and shall finalize the boundaries of the RPA for the area which will be subject to the site plan and, and shall submit such information as part of its application for site plan approval. The applicant shall construct the roads indicated on the master development plan as private roads, but shall provide reasonable access for the emergency vehicles to all occupied portions of the property, included but not limited to access via hard surface gravel roads and access codes to any barriers placed for controlling unauthorized access as specified as part of the site plan review. Parking shall be designed to reasonably minimize the amount of impervious surface that is required for frequent parking or heavy loads, or otherwise the parking may be field parking or some form of pervious parking materials. Applicant shall meet the minimum parking requirements for each phase of development of the property as set forth in the master development plan. Applicant shall not schedule or allow events whose aggregate projected parking requirements, according to the master development plan, exceed the parking actually provided, or exceed any weekly or annual usage restrictions applicable under King George County ordinances. No uplighting will be utilized, and all fixtures will be fully sheer downward pointing, dark sky friendly designs to minimize glare and light trespass. The applicant shall install a monument sign at the entrance of the property. The sign shall meet all requirements and setbacks of the King George Code, including without limitation Section 3.11. As part of its site plan submittal process, the applicant will seek input from fire and EMS and police and taken to account, taking into account site plan design. So, the rural development area, the Potomac River North rural development area includes all the land in King George County located north of Route 3 with the exception of the courthouse, Doggeren, Claydale, Fairview Beach, Route 3, and the Oakland Park, uh, primary settlement areas. The key policies and implementation strategy include encouraging very low-density rural residential growth, growth, and discouraging higher-density residential and commercial development. Residential density should remain in range of one dwelling per two to 10 acres unless cluster development techniques are employed with large blocks of open space being preserved. And also encouraging agricultural and first forest preservation through the maintenance of, or maintenance of land use taxation and careful review of rezoning requests. Also implementing and encouraging large lot and/or sliding scale zoning in the areas currently zoned agricultural to promote the preservation of agricultural land. Encouraging new residential development occurs only at very low densities with large blocks of agricultural and forest lands permanently preserved in conjunction with the cluster development, and enhancing limited public access to the Potomac. Allow limited small-scale, carefully designed, and access of public boat ramps along the river. Also encourage through zoning and subdivision requirements the continued creation of community access to the waterfront and subdivisions developed along the Potomac River, and development plan should be designed to minimize the amount of impervious areas, maximize preservation of native vegetation, and ensure maintenance of best management practices, compliance with erosion settlement regulations, regulations, coordinate with the Virginia Department of Health, and manage non-point source pollution runoffs from redevelopment projects. So, the applicant has provided a response to how this project is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Yes, next slide. Next one. Next one. Yep. So, the project will promote the following goals of the comprehensive plan. Preserve the rural characteristics of the county, encourage the land use patterns that sustain and enhance the health, safety, morals, order, convenience, prosperity, and general virtue of the residents. Promote a healthy, diverse economy, and in the county encourage protection of critical environmental resources. The project will, as, will promote the rural characteristic, statistics in the following ways. Next slide. And again, these are, this is the applicant's response to the King George Comprehensive Plan. Next slide, please. The project is consistent with the comprehensive plan implementation strategy of encouraging very low density of rural residential growth and discouraging high-density residential growth and commercial development. The resort will have only three permanent, permanent residential dwellings and little commercial activity. The plan to impose a conservation easement on the property in advance of zoning and general design of the project will meet the plan's goal of encouraging forest preservation, the protection of the Chesapeake Bay water quality, as well as that of the Potomac. The project also helps the county achieve another of its major goals, promoting healthy, diverse economy, and bringing in economic activity by those visiting the events at the resort, as well as the jobs associated with resort. The project anticipates creating approximately three full-time jobs, three part-time jobs, and a substantial number of seasonal jobs, as well as generating work for numerous local vendors, service providers, and contractors. Moreover, the project operations will promote tourism and facilitate economic growth. Design of the project will maintain the current designation in appropriate areas of resource protection areas. It will promote lighting design which minimizes light pollution, enhance the environment, deters undesirable activities, increases safety, and minimizes glare, power consumption cost, visual impacts, and unwarranted truant light onto private property. The project will utilize standards to protect the dark sky of King George County as one of its many natural scenic, scientific, and cultural resources for the benefit of residents and visitors now and in the future. The project will preserve native vegetation and natural stormwater management. Oh, no. The project will utilize buffers and setbacks to enhance and retain the rural setting of the area while still allowing reasonable development of the site. The project design allows continued agricultural use of significant portions of the site consistent with the plan. In a portion of the county with substantial, or substantial nearby development, the project will have substantial open space and general character consistent with the surrounding rural uses. The project will utilize buses for many events, reducing traffic impacts in general. Additionally, the events at the property will typically Additionally, the events at the property will typically be timed so that the traffic associated with such event will occur other than peak traffic times on surrounding roads. Cars coming onto the project will be centrally parked and internal transportation will be by foot, bike, or cart. This should reduce impulse travel from the site. The site will have only one entrance to the public road which will protect the capacity and safety of the network. Next slide, please. VDOT has offered the following comments. This office has reviewed the referenced documents in accordance with the minimum standards as received via email on May 11, 2020. The department has no objection to the approval of this application. However, please note, note the following as this project moves forward. The analysis shows a right turn lane warranted at the intersections of Routes 614 and 624 in the future, and the county may wish to consider this item for future publicly funded projects. Intersection site distance for the site entrance shall be based on Table 2-5 of the VDOT Road Design Manual Appendix F, which may vary from the AASHTO Green Book. The Service Authority has offered the following comments. Based on the submittal from Christian Hampson of Stantec, the total daily water demand is 91,800 GPD and the total daily water, or daily sewer demand is 78,030 GPD after total buildout. Also, the phasing memo shows that the project is expected to be phased over a total of 25 years. The owner is responsible for the cost of all utility extensions and any upgrades to the existing utility infrastructure that is needed to serve this project, such as a water booster station or upgrade of a pump station. After reviewing the flow demand updates and phasing of this project, the Service Authority approves of the rezoning application and confirms that there is sufficient capacity to serve this project at this time. However, it shall be noted that being outside the primary settlement area, the project will need to be approved by both the Service Authority Board of Directors and the King George County Board of Supervisors. The Service Authority gives priority to primary settlement areas and areas within the comprehensive plan. Fire and Rescue has offered the following comments. After reviewing the conceptual site layout and proposed buildings, it was reported to me that the building heights would not exceed three stories high. Additionally, the site would have county water and sewer mains that would support hydrants and building fire suppression sprinkler systems throughout the development. It is understood that the Fire and Rescue Department would conduct a further review of these systems, fire lanes, and hydrant locations on future site plans. Additionally, each occupied building should have an assigned 911 address. At this time, it is not feasible to determine the exact impact of Fire and Rescue emergency vehicle calls that would be generated by this proposed development due to not knowing proposed uses. Next slide. NSF Dogron has offered the following comments. The only comments we have are traffic impacts to Owen Shrive and Route 301. Noise could impact the development from naval support facility dogging. The development should disclose this information to occupants since they are adjacent to a military base resulting in noise impacts during training exercises. Next slide. So finally, the Department of Community Development staff recommends that the King George County Planning Commission first determine if the request to extend public facilities outside the primary settlement area is substantially in accord with the comprehensive plan, and next, forward case number 19-08-03, request by PR Farm LLC to rezone with proffers, tax map nine parcel five from limited agricultural to resort community district, total project area 332.32 acres. Master development plan proposes a resort community with temporary lodging for 900 occupants, including tent platforms, staff cottages for 18 occupants, a chapel, an amphitheater, and other uses, including special events for up to 440 people. The property is currently zoned limited agricultural with the minimum lot size and the limited agricultural zoning district is 10 acres. The requested zoning is resort community RC. Per King George County Comprehensive Plan, the property is located in the Potomac River North Rural Development Area to the King George County Board of Supervisors with recommendation to approve the rezoning request and accept the proffers. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Do we have the applicant here?
Yes.
Why don't we, at this time, let the applicant speak, and then from that point, we'll open the floor for public comments. So, if the applicant's here, if you could please, where are they setting up?
Good evening, members of Planning Commission, members of the public. I'm Dan Sloan with Vertical Vision. I'm representing the property owner tonight. One of my qualifications for being here tonight is that what I proposed to my wife, she was a church camp counselor, she told me stories of the amazing impacts of that camp on the children that came there. I'm here tonight to talk about a proposed church retreat. The next slide, please. For many years, this was not the plan for this property. The plan began with its A1 by right qualification for 33 houses and was explored in different forms, including this A2 cluster version from a planning study in 2011. The property owner had done previous subdivisions along these lines, but he passed away and his widow had a different vision. She approached Hope Church in Richmond and asked them what they thought they could accomplish with this property. The church was asked to dream about what good they could do with a gift of property like this. So tonight is about exploring the church's vision. If the zoning is approved, the land will be gifted to the church. If not, the family will decide whether to do the by right development or some similar development. Next slide. So the church got together with its committees and discussions were held, and they worked hard on what would be the best programs to accomplish their mission and what would be the best way for them to be a good neighbor. This is the vision, and I'll walk through it quickly to answer questions that have been asked and to correct some of the things that people have said in different forms. Next slide, please. So if you start with the 100-foot buffer around the whole property and places where the trees have been cut within that buffer, it'll be allowed to return to forest. One of the concerns expressed by neighbors was that people might leave the property and come onto theirs. And in response, we've added a proffer. So in addition to the proffers that were read to you, we've added within the last few days a few more proffers, and I'll describe them. So we added a proffer that the church will mark the boundaries of the property, will add a statement in its orientation materials that no one is allowed to leave the property, and will provide a contact number online if there are any complaints so that someone can promptly respond. Next slide? Next slide, please. Oh, I've got, I'm sorry, back one. So the way you will arrive at the property, you come along the front of the property and the entire frontage, the only thing you'll see is one road end, a guardhouse, and a sign. You won't see the parking area because when the church starts building that, they'll install a berm and then landscape in front of that so that it'll look like the surrounding forest. Next sign, next slide, please. But one flyer said that it would be a huge sign. These are the kinds of materials that the church must use to build the sign, and it can't be over 12 feet tall and must comply with the King George sign requirements. And for comparison's sake, in the current agricultural zone, the property has a sign height limitation of 25 feet, so it would be less. Next slide. If you enter the property, the next thing you'd come to is the hidden parking on the right, so it really shouldn't matter how much is there because it will be hidden. The bulk of the parking is furnished up at the front of the site because it can be regulated there through the guardhouse and because the retreat experience is about walking and biking. There are drop-off zones and accessible parking spaces in other parts of the property. The primary parking is in this area. If you drive on in, you'll see the three residence over on your left for the permanent staff, and to your right, you'll see the one multi-use field. You'll see the gym, which includes the general store and infirmary and the dining hall. There was a question regarding what buildings could be seen from the road and across the road. Nothing but the guardhouse from the road, and perhaps from the second floor on the hill across the road, you could see above the trees the tops of these two buildings. But they would be about the same size and character as the barns that could be built there in agricultural zoning. You continue on, you pass the pool and the pool house, and back there in the woods, some bunkhouses, if you cut up, and if you cut up there, you'd see the cabins and the tent platforms. There's been some discussion of the size of the buildings. I'm not sure why it matters back in the trees, but, next slide, please. As you heard earlier, only 1.54% of the site will be under roof, which means 98.5% of the site will be open space. Now, there are different kinds of open space, about 7%, it'll be recreational open space, things like that multi-use field I mentioned, 19% improved open space such as the paths and the lawns and the roads, but 72% of the site will be unimproved open space. We'll be putting restrictions in place to make sure it stays that way. It's important to understand that when all is said and done, this is all the buildings that can be done on this site. Next slide, next slide, please. And when you come to the part of the campus toward the river, there's more lodging, a second dining hall, a chapel, not a church, and another pool and an art studio because Hope believes in art as part of their ministry. The lodges are not large buildings. Next slide. We've committed that these designs and comparable materials will define the lodges and the cabins. Next slide. These are the comparable materials and design elements for the chapel. Next slide. Now, two aspects of this area have raised some questions. One is about the impact on the shoreline. When the property owner began exploring the property for by right housing, they explored some fairly major shoreline impacts, including shoreline restoration, creating a beach, which would require the installation of groynes and a boat launch and a marina. But those aren't what's going forward. Hope plans to leave the vast majority of the shoreline untouched and utilizing the Chesapeake Bay's Bay Axe 100-foot buffer. Unlike multiple homeowners, the church plans only one access point to the river and perhaps a small dock. They plan to use canoes, kayaks, and small sailboats. And to, again, address neighborhood concerns, neighborhood concerns, we've had another proffer that prohibits the recreational use of personal motorized watercraft and instructs the invitees to only use the designated path to the water so there won't be any erosion. From an eagle's perspective, the shoreline will be virtually unchanged and will not have the motor boats, jet skis, and multiple docks and access points that development for individual homes would bring. The other thing that people have asked about is the amphitheater, which is up on that around where A is on the other side. Originally, Hope had planned it to be larger, but in response to concerns, it cut its size in about half to hold 400 guests plus staff. And note that it will be tucked behind the buildings that you see. But even more than that, next slide, please. You have to understand the topography of the property, and you see how the property slopes down to the river. The amphitheater will be down that slope so that between the county, most of the county residents and the amphitheater will be a hill. Sound is absorbed and buffered by mass. The amphitheater will be restricted so that the nighttime cutoff on amplified sound will be at 10 o'clock, and of course, the King George noise ordinance will apply to the use like it does to everyone else's property. Next slide. Questions have come up about the phasing of the project, and I won't go through it again because staff described it well, but I want to point out that this phasing reflects the church's estimate of how long it will take to raise money for improvements. And they come in spurts, they come in rounds, because they anticipate that those are the way you raise capital funds, is you go out and you raise money for a chapel, you raise money for a youth camp. And they anticipate that that may take as long as 25 years, but that doesn't mean that construction goes on for 25 years. That means that construction goes on when those phases come along and you do the construction for that, and then there are many years without any construction. And it's also construction that is not significantly out of scale, by the way, with the construction of a subdivision of 30 to 33 homes with their pools and outbuildings, whether it occurs in five years or 25 years. Next slide, please. Traffic is important in King George, we know that. So our TIA, our Traffic Impact Analysis concludes that for the first three phases of the project, which are projected to take about 15 years to achieve, the intersections at the site entrance and Owens and Mathias Point Road will operate at the same level that they do with background. So we will not significantly increase those impacts. And no road improvements are necessary to support this project. VDOT agreed with that analysis, but they noted that the background traffic would warrant a right turn lane in the future of Route 614, 624 at that intersection without regard to the project. So in a proffers, we've tried to do a number of things to address this. The first is, as was mentioned, unless a light has been installed at the entrance to the project, whenever there's an event with more than 50 cars, the church will furnish someone to supervise and manage the exit of the vehicles. When the church wants to start Phase 2B, whether that's in 15 years or five years, it has to complete another traffic study for the remainder of the phases and provide any entrance design or control the VDOT determines to be necessary. And then we've added another proffer, and that is that prior to site plan approval for Phase 1C, the church will pay $250,000 to the county to be applied to the county's costs that are ancillary to the VDOT improvement of that intersection. So sometimes the county has to move other things, but remember, VDOT is the one that pays for it. The county doesn't pay for the intersection itself, but sometimes there are other costs that the county could incur. So we've basically said we'll put $250,000 in an escrow account for the county to apply to its ancillary costs associated with improvements with that intersection. If, after the county has applied that money, there are funds left, and VDOT separately requires the project to do any further improvements at the intersection, then the balance of that fund would be given to the applicant to apply toward those. That's in one of our added proffers, and that is reflecting the fact that we acknowledge that even though we don't cause this intersection to change its character, we contribute to traffic there, and we're interested in a safe intersection. So we want to be good neighbors and contribute to that as well. For perspective, the by right, next slide, please. For perspective, the by right development does not have to do a TIA, though they may have, they may be subject to entrance design requirements. And the traffic projected for Hope Retreat is expected to mostly come in groups that have multi-day stays. We have internal circulation for foot and bike and car alternatives. We have group arrivals and departures that can be scheduled in advance, avoiding peak traffic hours. Our arrival and departures are typically over the course of two hours, and the size of most events is expected to be significantly less than our maximum capacities of the buildings, like is true of most buildings, by the way. Many events such as youth retreats don't even involve cars, they involve buses, vans. And for perspective, again, just for perspective, VDOT assumes about 10 car trips per day for non-urban residents. So when somebody says they don't want this project because of the traffic, they're saying they prefer 300 trips a day, between 30 and 90 of those happening at each peak traffic period. We think that this project is actually better than that in terms of its traffic impacts, and we think that we are going further in terms of helping the county deal with existing problems than the by right development would. Next slide, please. You've heard a good discussion of the fiscal impact. I just wanted to point out a couple of things because, again, they've come up in discussions in the community. State Code 58.1-3606 exempts only church property exclusively occupied and used for religious worship. The residents of the minister and adjacent land reasonably necessary for the convenient use of the dominant purpose of religious worship use. Counties interpret this differently. Different counties provide different responses, just as different counties provide different responses to nonprofit lands within their boundaries. So we haven't tried to guess what this county would do. We went and asked the county, and so our fiscal impact projections are based on our discussions with the county. You know, the county's had to do that quickly without all of the information, so we're not saying that, you know, they've necessarily been able to reach the last penny in of it, but it's important to understand some of the big pieces, which are, they anticipate that we will be paying real estate taxes approximately the same as are paid there now, so on the land itself would continue. And they've told us that we will pay 9% on the meals and occupancy. So that's another $225,000 in taxes that would be paid in conjunction with this development. And that's in addition to the other numbers you've seen in there of our employing individuals in the county, the construction, $50 million of construction over time, the annual operating budget that gets spent within the county on food and other things coming in. budget that gets spent within the county on food and other things coming in. And again, for comparison purposes, it's largely believed by most localities, the residential development costs them money, whereas this project will pay money into the county that supports other properties. The next slide, please. I was going to talk more about the comprehensive plan, but I think you've heard, you know, the things we've said about the comprehensive plan. We think that we are, in fact, consistent with your comprehensive plan. It's a big plan. There are probably things in it that we are not completely consistent with. But when you look at it as a whole, and you look at the things we are doing that preserve the open space there, we are consistent with the view and the vision of the county that's projected, and our protection of wetlands, our protection of the RPAs, the steps we've gone to in addition that aren't necessarily required of other properties, to focus on native plantings, to eliminate invasive species, to control our lighting beyond just dark sky lighting, to actually think carefully about the way lighting takes place on the ground. We think are very consistent with the view that you've had of the future. And we also think that our extension of the sewer would not expose significant property to development, and it would help avoid more septic systems being in place, and it would protect the ground and surface water. Next slide. I want to close by talking about the uses because that's come up as a great deal of discussion. So again, in the last couple of days, we've changed our proffers to try to eliminate some of the concerns about this. But first, you need to understand the way we approach use. We've limited both the types of use and the purpose of buildings and undertakings on the property. And the types of use, beginning with, the buildings can be used for the type of use they're labeled with under the plan, so dining hall, chapel, that sort of thing. They and their immediate surroundings can be used for the adult, youth, and small group retreats, concerts, weddings, and overnight camping, as we've outlined in there. Organizational meetings, food trucks, festivals, those sorts of things are what they can be used for. The recreational open space can be used for sports, hiking, the sorts of things you'd expect. Normally, under a zoning code, the property would then be able to do anything else that was allowed in the zoning unless you disclaimed it. And when we initially filed these proffers, we disclaimed a number of obvious things, you know, timeshares, those sorts of things. But that seemed to leave a lot of confusion in the public. So in our revised proffers, we've disclaimed all uses unless they're described in the application or specified in the proffers. So we've narrowed it down, tight as we can. Now, the proffers only list a narrow band of uses which are consistent, next slide, I'm sorry, which are consistent with those in the application. They restrict us to lodges for retreat purposes. They restrict us to health and fitness spa facilities used in connection with retreats, riding stables, horse show arenas, equestrian facilities, tennis and handball courts and associated clubhouses, docks and piers. We've tried to mirror the things that we've got there. Restaurants and similar eating and drinking establishments only as a dining hall for the lodge, and snack bars for pools, the gym, and other buildings as accessory uses or as temporary kiosks. Conference center, meeting rooms, and banquet facilities. Art fair, kiosks, and other similar small-scale temporary retail establishments allowed by law. An art gallery that I mentioned earlier. Temporary daycare facility in association with retreats and events on the property, and accessory uses and structures incidental to permitted uses. Next slide. The other constraint on uses is purpose. And this is a hard one because at one level, we simply wanted to come in and say, "Church purpose." But that's a little fuzzy. What are church purposes? And so we tried to go a little deeper than that. And so we limited it to, the uses can only be, it'd be only in connection with the goals of addressing the spiritual and life needs, development of individuals and organizations, whether for fees or not, and not for general commercial use. So you can't call and book a room at the lodge. That's general commercial. But if you're a local church or school or the Rotarians, you can call and use the facilities, though there might be a fee. You can have equestrian facilities to use for camp and programs for disabled or traumatized kids or adults, but you cannot have a stable just for boarding horses or riding lessons. You can't rent for a commercial concert, but you can have a church concert even if you sell tickets. We think with the revisions, that we've dramatically focused and reduced the possible uses of the property, again, in response to concerns that the community had. We appreciate your time listening to us tonight. Representatives of the property owner and the church are here tonight to answer your questions. We appreciate the neighbors who've taken the time to listen to the proposal and give us their concerns. We hope we've addressed them, though we know that some would prefer that nothing happened. We appreciate the folks who have told us about their support for the project, how they were happy about the wholesome use of the plan. They recall their own experiences at church camps and retreats, and hope that others can achieve something comparable here in the beauty of King George along the Potomac River. I encourage you to vote to approve this application and the substantial accord, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have now or later with the other members of the team. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. At this time, does any members of the planning commission have any questions for either staff or the applicant before we open up the floor? All right. At this time, we'll open up a public comment period for this public hearing.
I motion that we, it's right here. Motion that we take a 10-minute break prior to?
Yes. Can we just take a 10-minute break prior to public hearing? Do we do a motion? Okay. Take a 10-minute break? Thank you, Mr. Williams. We will resume at promptly 8:30.[1014.04]
Next speaker is Mr. David Colka.
Good evening. My name is Steve Hock.
The resort plan proposes to use Dahlgren water and sewer system. The comprehensive plan states, and I quote, "Do not extend or establish wastewater treatment systems without a formal determination by the planning commission and the board supervisors, that such utility proposals are in conformance with the comprehensive plan." Comprehensive plan also states, "Do not extend or plan extensions of wastewater service into areas not designated in the comprehensive plan for such services, i.e. primary settlement areas." Such extensions violate, with and undermine, the comprehensive plan. Moreover, if such services are extended to this property in conflict with the comprehensive plan, adjacent property owners would be entitled to the same service extensions. There are currently more than 600 acres of land for sale on Mathias Point Road. This would encourage high-density development of Mathias Point similar to what exists in the Chatham subdivision. You may recall a service extension was recently requested for a townhouse development on Mathias Point Road. That was unanimously denied by this planning commission. We believe the commission should be consistent in refusing approval for such significant deviations from the county's comprehensive plan. Considering public safety, the resort development plan calls for more than 25 years of construction, ultimately providing lodging and parking for more than 900 people. As you know, the only way to get to and from this property is via Owens Drive and Mathias Point Road. The intersection of Owens Drive and Dahlgren Road is arguably the most dangerous intersection in the county. Dahlgren commuters use Owens Drive as a bypass, the lights on 301. Traffic daily backs up from the intersection of Dahlgren Road all the way to Owens, through Owens, to Little Our Church. 25 years of dump trucks, construction workers, not to mention church members, traveling in buses, vans, and cars to and from Richmond to the resort would endanger all of us who use those roads daily. Considering quality of life issues, Wes Peterson from New Hope Church stated that no more than 5% of the land would be under roof. That equates to approximately 800,000 square feet under roof, not counting amphitheaters, swimming pools, and others. That's equal to about 15 football fields under roof. Two inches of rain would result in more than 1 million gallons of runoff. The plan also includes a giant parking lot for more than 220 cars, buses, and vans that would be right on Mathias Point Road.
You have three minutes if you can wrap up, sir.
The proposal to plant a buffer would take decades to hide a parking lot full of buses. There also, as you saw, the proposal includes a large entrance side along with a guardhouse directly on Mathias Point Road. This land currently has wild turkeys, eagle nests, blue heron, rockery, and beaver families.
Mr. Hock, we do need to wrap. Thank you. Ma'am, we would get by quicker without interruptions, but one more out of you and you're out. Ma'am, you're one more, you're out. I'm serious, I'm not kidding. You're out. One more and you're out, okay? Cops are here, one more and you're out. I'm not playing around. Yes, that's fine, but you're, but I'm sorry. Who is the speaker? The next speaker was Kelly Colka?
I'm almost done. The resort is the antithesis of the number-one stated goal in the comprehensive plan of preserving the rural characteristics of King George County. And this lasted a key point, I think, considering the benefit to King George County and its residents. The $50 million of construction will not be taxed. Construction materials will be purchased out of the county. Once the resort is up and running and is doubtful that supplies to feed and house those 900 people will be purchased locally. Delivery trucks will be a constant occurrence. Church members will stay at the resort, not contributing anything to the local economy as they have described. This would be a private resort for Richmond Mega Church. When I asked Wes Peterson from the church to describe the benefit to King George residents, there was a pregnant silence. There is no benefit to King George County or its residents. Please do not destroy our quality of life, our property values, and jeopardize our safety. Please do not approve this ill-conceived plan. Thank you very much for your time.
The next speaker is Mr. David Colka.
Good evening. My name's Dave Colka. Can we get a copy of, is this presentation for this subdivision online so that, because it was awful, it was very hard to read, but I'll go ahead and go with some of my statements. I saw hotel motel brought up in the presentation. So, we're gonna have either motel hotel on this property, concerts, they're saying they're limiting concerts to 440 people, what is that, 10 busloads? Do you need 20 acres to, really, do you need 20 acres to park 10 buses? I'm not sure. Yeah, there's gonna be a lot of traffic on Mathias. And Mathias, beyond that point, is probably the worst road in the county. And we're gonna have to put up with a lot of traffic, construction, at the same time as we go to our homes further down Mathias Point Road. That is, like I say, probably the worst road in the county. I don't know if any of you live out there, but if you do, I know you'll agree with me. And then we have to deal with, like I say, construction, all these people coming, concerts? Really, concerts?
If any of you live out there, but if you do, I know you'll agree with me. And then we have to deal with, like I say, construction, all these people coming. Really concerts? You know, some of those kids are not going to stay at that concert and they're going to try and find Taco Bell, Burger King, or McDonald's. Basically, they're going to be walking out on county roads. Someone's going to get killed. I think it's a very ill conceived plan. The only way, and I don't think you'll be able to keep everyone in that resort is by locking them down. And I don't think that's going to happen. I really think that you should not consider this plan at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. John Jenkins, Jr.
I really wish I had more than three minutes, but I'll try to talk fast, I guess. My name is John Jenkins. I live on 2366 Nancy Lane, King George, Virginia. As many of you know, or may be aware, I was on the Board of Supervisors from 2015 to 2019. I know the beard's a little bit longer. Maybe you don't recognize me with the mask. While on the board, as a general rule of thumb concerning rezoning, which is what they're asking for, the basic question to ask is how will this benefit the county? And this resort, one of the focuses seem to be centered around transporting large groups of people from outside the community and into our community. Therefore, and then also charging them for the youth to use their facilities while under the guise of being operated as a church. This means revenue would not be taxed if that's what they accomplish. And it's interesting that you referenced taxes and mule taxes and stuff like that, but I spoke with the county administrator today at 1:00 in the afternoon and said that they're still not sure if they're going to operate as a commercial business or a church. They operate on a church, there is not going to be very much revenue, if at all. That is not beneficial to the county. How is this remotely beneficial to the county? It certainly does not meet the quote from the County Code Concerning Resort Community Section 2.13, which states such a community will provide economic benefits to the county. Beyond lacking positive economic impact, it does not appear to enrich the lives of our community, which many have already said, and I repeat, our community, not Richmond. It seems to me that essentially, it's essentially a commercial business. Per the comp plan, which was ridiculous that they said it meets the comp plan to me, it's not in a primary settlement area. My name's on that plan, by the way. Commercial development is recommended to follow the existing development pattern along 301, 206, and a portion of 614 adjacent to 206, so not in the middle of Owens Road, which is where this is. Proposed area obviously does not meet that standard. That's a quote from the comp plan. One of the main things I wanted to talk about, and I'm going as fast as I can, the facility of this nature will certainly impact the roads. One of the things that was brought to me when I was on the board was the alternative to the wayside park, which is obviously, everyone knows the results of that now. One of the sites that was proposed was actually on Mathias Point Road at one point. You know why it was kicked down? Because the roads weren't sufficient enough to handle a facility, a park. So why was it okay if that was thrown away, the park, a waterfront park, but it would be okay to have a facility of this nature? That doesn't seem to add up to me. So the roads weren't good enough for that, but they're good enough for this. It's a very narrow roadway. I tried as a rep to get that road widened. It costs millions and millions of dollars to do that. It needs to be widened. I know, sorry. And I don't think they're going to pony up to widen that road. So do you need me to stop? I guess. Yeah, sorry, I should have had a stopwatch. I had a bunch of points. I'll try to email you guys. Thank you for your time and thank you for your service of the community.
Diane Kerr.
Hello, thank you for hearing from me. My name is Diane Kerr, and I'm one of the owners of Albion, which is the property immediately adjacent to the proposed site for this retreat. I think that our road, just to give you a flavor, our entrance road and the current entrance road to the proposed site are probably separated by maybe 25 feet of mostly open land. So whatever is built in there is going to dramatically affect our property. And I think that one of the things that's been discussed is the buffer issue. We're talking about buffer of maybe 100 feet, but mostly it's allowing things to return to current natural state. The natural state is open, and the natural state will take a long time to change, and there will be a lot of building along our road. More importantly, though, looking at the bigger picture of this, I think that we need to keep in mind that what's being proposed here is really quite dramatic change for King George. We have right now the property in the areas that are mostly residential or rural, and it's family homes. And in our case, it's places we spend weekend, places we spend summers, and places where we get our family together. I think that it's hard to quite see how you mesh that, including the zoning requirement, that there not be a fundamental change in the impact on neighborhoods with what's being proposed. Because I think primarily what's being proposed involves very large numbers of people. And I personally have some serious doubt whether it's possible to accommodate that number of people in an area where you're primarily having residential and rural development. What's different about this and some of the venues and issues that you faced before, like with event venues that you've dealt with, is we're talking about something that is going to be used full-time during the summer, part-time during the rest of the year, and for somewhere between 500 and 1,000 people at a time. When we look at the people there and we try to compare it to what the current right of development is, we're talking, right now, maybe 30 houses, I think, is what's being specified. What's not clear is, 30 houses does not give anyone the right to develop the river the way it's been described. So I think when we try to compare what's best for this land, to say that 30 houses by definition means a lot of development of the river, a lot of traffic, et cetera, all of that would be part of the development approval that this board would have to issue for a different alternative. So I think we need to be careful to try to not have the comparison be all, one is very bad and the other is very good. They've both got benefits and negatives.
Miss Kerr, we're at time.
Sorry, what?
We're at time, ma'am.
Okay.
Next, we have Peggy Cook.
Yes, thank you for having me tonight. I'm Peggy Cook. I'm also from Albion Drive. I'm Diane's sister. We have a large tract of land there. First of all, I do want to say that we met with Hope Church and we're very thankful that they spent the time to go over things with us. And we do agree with their mission. We understand the mission and support their mission. However, we think it's way too large. Would you all want a neighbor who has 400 to 900 guests with them every weekend? Because that's basically what's being proposed. A guest that has, a neighbor that has guests with amplified music from 9:00 a.m. till 10:00 p.m. We have had land in the family for more than 200 years, and about 12 years ago, my father died and left the land to my sisters and I. And it took us about eight years to figure out how to potentially subdivide the land so we could give it to our children without it being a burden and trying to figure out how to pass it down. We did that through the family subdivision ordinance, and we still have several more years before we could even think about selling it, which is fine with us because we don't want to sell it. We love the land. We love how peaceful and beautiful King George is. And that seems to be very different from the idea that now, right next door, we're going to have 400 to 900 people visiting us each time. We ended up dividing into four, I'm sorry, three 40-acre parcels and three 10-acre parcels. And we would like to be able to enjoy that. However, if we are down there with amplified music and a lot of people, we think it's going to end up losing the same benefit. So when they were reading off, I just wrote down, there's 40-plus buildings, there's a pool house, residential house, there's cabins, there's an amphitheater, there's a bunkhouse, there's horseback riding, there's recreational and open space with fields where people are going to be playing soccer, et cetera. That doesn't sound peaceful to me. That doesn't sound like what we were aiming for when we were working with, trying to figure out how to subdivide our land to make sure we were within the zoning that was allowed by King George. We also have concerns that although the Hope Church has been helpful in talking to us, many of the things that they're saying will happen are not requirements, such as the phasing. There's nothing that's saying they can't build everything in five years. If it was truly going to be phased in, in 25 years, maybe that would make people feel more comfortable. So I'd ask that you all would consider some of the things they're making statements about to make them requirements. And again, I do agree with some of what the other speakers have said about the benefits to members of King George. Some of the pictures look beautiful, but it also strikes me that how beautiful the pictures could be of some of the amphitheater, it won't be able to be used by the residents of King George. So please take this into consideration when making your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Next, we have Ron Mason. Mr. Jenkins, if you want to blow back.
All right. I thought I was off the hook. Let's see, where did I leave off? I was referencing wanting to widen the narrow roads, and I was trying to implement it into the six-year plan for VDOT, which we have, which doesn't allow for lots. And that's when I found out that widening roads costs a lot of money. It was going to cost, like I said, millions upon millions of dollars. To piggyback on what Mr. Hawk was saying earlier, I reached out to the school board and asked what kind of issues their bus drivers had. They had immense issues. There's a lot of safety issues with bigger vehicles. Guess what one of the things they talked about having come to all these retreats? Buses. One of the main reasons I was trying to get the road widened was because of bus traffic, and now we're going to add more buses. There's an issue there. I laugh, I was trying not to fall out of my seat when they said the traffic is going to be improved with their presence. That makes no sense whatsoever. None. And the $250,000 that they are proposing to improve the intersection, based off of my experience, and I'm sure you've had some experience with VDOT, is not really that much. And newsflash, that turn lane that they're putting on now on 301, there we go, 301 by Sheets, you know, when that was approved? That was approved like two or three years prior than starting. So if VDOT can say, yeah, we're going to put a turn lane in, but good luck, off of a secondary road. They can't even do it on 301. And the VDOT requirements that they're talking about meeting and stuff, those are minimum requirements. Yes, it would not be great if they put a 30-house home, excuse me, home development there, but at least there are other restrictions, other access roads. This is, you're a bottleneck. If you have an event there with 900 people, I appreciate that they've limited the 450 capacity of the amphitheater. People can sit in grass at concerts. I know that's shocking to everyone. So it's going to be more than 450 people, let's be real. All right? So you're going to have 900 people, several buses, sitting at this one little narrow country road that needs to be widened desperately, that we probably never be able to because it costs too much money, and we're going to add that there on a busy road that people use to get the gate B at the base, which I'm sure many of you are aware of. Unfortunately, like I said, we couldn't afford such a massive project. Like I said, Owens Road intersects there, has a high volume of traffic, and now we're going to add that. Doesn't make sense to me. I'd like to think I made some sense over my time here, but I'm sure some could argue with that. Should a large event occur, there's only one way out currently, like I said, it's a bottleneck. I'm sorry, guys, I'm way off my flow here. But with where your decision process is, it talks about, as far as before you forward this to the board, it talks, it raises questions concerning, and I quote, "the relationship to surrounding areas." Based off of what I heard, it's not going to be a great relationship with that facility. People's opinions that live here matter. The board supervisors more so represent the people, but you guys certainly do. I think that's valuable. I think you should be representing the people that live here and not people from another area. And that's all this is, guys. It's a facility for other people. So in case you haven't figured it out, I don't think it meshes with the kind of plan. And I don't think there's some obvious benefits in the community. Please vote this down. Thank you.
Next, we have Debbie Sanders.
Thank you for letting me speak. My husband and I live in the Dawburn side of Owens Drive, so it's only 25 miles per hour through there. And I cannot believe there won't be a traffic impact with buses and large construction equipment coming through there. And I just feel like, I just feel like all of our lives there are not being taken into consideration. So if you would please think about things like that. Nobody obeys our speed limit, so buses aren't going to do it, construction traffic aren't going to do, excuse me. So that's okay. But yeah, if you would please take that into consideration. And we have friends on Mathias Point, so you know, we see a lot of the wildlife there, and we're concerned about that, too, not having it anymore. Thank you for your time.
Next is Nancy Hester. Thank you. And then followed by Mr. West Hester. Thank you. Next, we have Mr. James Lund. Thank you, sir. Mr. James Carter.
Good evening. My name's J.G. Carter. I'm an elder and a trustee at Hope Church. I'm here just, I asked to be put on the list just so that you could put a face with us. We're here and obviously available to answer questions for you if at that point you want to ask questions. I do want you to know, we are appreciative of the partnership already we've had with the neighbors. We've had great discussions with them. I know every, obviously everyone has concerns, and they're legitimate ones, but we've worked hard to build a master plan that addresses those as best we could. And there is a spirit and a hope behind all of this, beyond the very practical matters of traffic and parking and sewer hookups, which are all very important and worthy of the discussion we're having about it. But hope exists to create experiences and relationships in places where people can find life. And so when the owner of the property came to us and presented this idea about what might happen on this piece of property, you can imagine the momentum that was created and the excitement that was created about the possibility of not only doing that at our church, but doing that in a unique and creative way on this beautiful piece of property. And so I just want you to know that our heart is to adhere to your comprehensive plan closely to protect the rural nature of the property while accomplishing some unique and incredible things there. And so we're excited about that on a go-forward basis. Our goals are simple, to create an asset that something ultimately the county would be proud of, would be happy was there, and that could do good work while we accomplish our mission out there. And ultimately, it's to be something that you would be proud to be neighbors with. So we thank you for your consideration of the rezoning.
Thank you. Okay, ma'am, that's it. I'd like to make a motion to eject the lady in the red dress.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Deputy, would you please escort this lady out? Next, we have Mr. Tim Rens.
Good evening, everybody. Great presentation by these folks here. As a young kid, I did church summer camps. It helped mold people life, and I really honor what they're trying to do here. Couple months ago, and I know a lot of you were involved with this, we sat through a similar presentation. And if you didn't know what the presentation was about, you would have thought, man, this was great for the county. But when you delved into it, it really wasn't. And that was the conversion of the golf course into a campground. I'm hoping this isn't something like that, because I fully appreciate what they're doing, but it really boils down to is, what does it do for the county? How does it improve the county? How does it help the county? Everybody's given ample justifications on why you shouldn't, but what does it really do for the county? Because we see from a service authority perspective, we're not there. From a tax revenue perspective, a lot of ambiguity there of whether there's going to be tax revenue or not. The brief in of itself, they showed a lot of good pictures of signs, but yet there was ambiguity of this thing could be 25 feet or less. I lived down Mathias Point Road. I don't want a 25-foot sign up and down Mathias Point Road. So I'm not saying approve, disapprove, but look very carefully in what it does for the county and how does it help the county and the county grow appropriately. Thanks.
Good evening, Lewis Ashton. My brother and I own the adjacent farm to the west of the property that's proposed for this project. And so we'll have to look at it pretty good. And I'm rather encouraged. I like to look at this thing from a spiritual standpoint. Anything that I see that'll bring people to know Christ is an important thing, to King George County, to the state of Virginia, to Richmond. And the way they propose this thing, it is going to be available to churches of King George County to be able to use. And therefore, with my experience at the church I attend, we send youth off to retreats two or 300 miles away. It costs us $300 or $400 per youth to send them. And this is just to be a great thing, to have this thing right here, right at our back door. The other thing I think the county needs to look at is the cost of the 33 or so homes that might go in there, the cost to the county. You know, you won't have schoolchildren coming out of this project. They have proposed a lot of things to help fire and rescue, understand what they're trying to do there. So as a neighbor and having to be associated with this thing, I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Howard Nelson. I live on River Drive in the King George, on the Potomac subdivision on Mathias Point. My wife and I purchased this property 20 years ago and moved here from the congested area of Northern Virginia, seeking a more rural environment. We use Owens Drive and Mathias Point Road daily. It is our only way in and out for ourselves and our neighbors. These are narrow, two-way lanes and are frequently blocked by accidents, flooding, snow, and downed trees. Meeting trucks and school buses is a challenge. We knew this when we purchased and we accept this. What we did not know and cannot now accept is this proposal to totally change the rural character of our neighborhood and to be overwhelmed by this large proposed facility accommodating up to 900 people. Our infrastructure simply cannot support it. Our road system, the law enforcement, the fire, the EMS, and trash disposal will be severely impacted, as well as our water and sewer system. We all rely on the one aquifer for our water needs. It is being depleted and is not able to sufficiently regenerate. We as residents each support this infrastructure through our various taxes and charges we pay and accept them as necessary expenses. We are now asked to welcome this facility of 900 people, which will use these assets at no tax charge because of being a religious entity. Why would we do this? It would take 330 acres off the county tax rolls permanently. These participants that would come here, they don't live here, they do not work here, they do not own property here, and normally they would not support our local businesses. They come by the busload, stay a few days, and leave. There is absolutely no advantage to us as residents for this rezoning request to be It's like that long-lost cousin who comes to visit but stays forever, contributes nothing, and only, in this case, it's 900 long-lost cousins. I urge each of you, in the strongest possible terms, to vote to deny this rezoning request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
Hey, good evening. My name is Alfredo Sanchez. Still active-duty Navy, couple more months, retire here soon, and resident of King George. Of all the places we have lived, my wife and I decided this is the place we're going to relocate. The only problem I got is that there is a lot of ambiguity when it comes, I live in 2355 Nancy Lane, King George on the Potomac. There are a couple of conversations that we had when we first met the church was that there is a lot of ambiguity to the point of that we don't have the finance, and their comments was, hey, we don't have the finance available, we don't have the finance present. The land is supposed to be a grant, but it's pending the rezoning. So we have a project that doesn't own the land, doesn't have the fund to develop the land, but yet we're saying that it's a feasible project, therefore we shall rezone, which I find that to be a little bit out of place. We talked about water, we talked about sewer, electricity, but we don't talk about the rest of the other things that we don't talk about. We need to talk about broadband. What if 900 people, 900 occupants, will really take into consideration when it goes into both broadband, both in the aerial telecommunications and the ground base? There is going to be a demand, and I will tell you, we're not known in King George for the best cell phone coverage or the best broadband access. Oh, yeah, you're my neighbor. So, yeah, I got cell phone coverage on my living room, but not on my bedroom. It's a weird, it's a new thing to us, but we accepted it when we decided to relocate here. The other constraint sections, and I got a problem with alignment, this is when we talk about other constraints and all the things that they talk about, but we also mentioned food truck festival. So, I don't get the usage, and I don't understand their presentation because it's not consistent across. And we're going to bring a food truck convention or festival, but only closer to the people in the church, only to the people that got access to it. So, it's very odd, you know? It's a weird thing. But what really kind of got me into this was, hey, I met my wife in college and I had great memories when I was in the university. But that doesn't mean I'm going to try to build a university, right? And I got it, it's great for the development, spiritual development, I got it. But that's not what the land is for. It's agricultural. One thing that did give me a little bit of a bad feeling was when every time I talked to them or I asked a question was, well, would you rather have 30 houses? And it is like, oh, my God, 30 houses, five people per household, that's a little bit above average for the United States, but let's say five. That's 150 residents versus 900 occupants. So, I put it to the county of saying, do we want to have residents and grow the county? Because we're not going to stop progress, you know? We are not going to raise our hands and stop the tsunami. Well, you have the ability to channel the waters to the benefit of the county. And the benefit of the county is for the residents of the county, not for the occupants that come in. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Next we have Mr. Michael Frank.
Well, good evening, everybody. Thanks for letting me speak. I don't have a list of nothing like that because I didn't think I was going to say anything tonight. But after, you know, listening to the presentation of that gentleman about how this is supposed to be looked really nice and benefit our, you know, the area and the youth, you know what I can't really understand is that I look around King George and local areas, I see all these ballparks empty. The kids ain't running around, they're not playing baseball like we used to as a kid. I mean, most of the kids now, you can't pull them away from this little object right here. And they want to bring all these people here and get them on broadband and like, well, you can't get kids to even ride a horse? You know? How many kids have you seen riding a horse lately? That could control one. If one bolts and a kid gets hurt, well, guess what? How's the animal's going to get down there? And if something else happens, we don't have the facilities to maintain first response. Other people have mentioned the traffic on Owens Road, Mathias Point. It's brutal. Look what happens in front of the Walmart in 301 before they put the traffic lights in, and there's a wreck there almost every week. Now, I'm not against progress and I don't know if having kids get some education and spirituality, but why here, why now? Isn't there places close to Richmond that they could use? If that lady wouldn't have wanted to donate the land, would that church actually have some facility here? Or would they be looking down towards Richmond? You know, I mean, I'm just a middleman, you know? I just live here and work here, and I think this is one of the prettiest areas I've ever lived in. And yet, I don't want it to become like Hop Yard. People think Hop Yard's all great. It's cookie cutter. It's horrible looking. And I don't want that to happen in Mathias Point. There's a lot of pretty homes down there. And it's quiet, it's peaceful, and you can go out and you can see the stars at night. And there's a lot of people that get that benefit from seeing, you know, clear skies and see the Milky Way. I love it here and I think, you know, I love Virginia, but I don't think it'd be a good idea to have that facility here. And thank you for letting me say something.
Thank you, Mr. Frank. Mr. Tom Crook.
Thank you. Name's Tom Crook, 1504 Woodstock Road, just down the road. For 21 years, I've lived here and gone by the limited agricultural site, which to me has been very limited in the agricultural that has gone on. As I see it, I see this vision of a place for spiritual development. I've been on retreats, I'm sure many other people have been on retreats. It's a place to get away, a place to separate yourself from the daily life. And I think that would enhance the community. I think encouraging spiritual development is important. On the other end of Mathias Point, we have Mount Bethel. I just have a question is, how is Mount Bethel zoned? Just out of curiosity. Is that a resort or some other? Anybody know? Because they said this was only a resort, but I'm not making a contrast with that, but to me, I just think it would be a positive thing for this community and I would support it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And then last on our list, we have Mr. Mike Ryan.
Good evening. Name's Mike Ryan. I've been in King George for 30 years now. If you can tell, I've got the New York accent, so I know all about people and how many people are around me. I moved to Mathias Point because I had 10 acres and I put the house in the middle so I wouldn't have crowds of people around me. Part of the problems that I also see, I've only been there a year and a half, and in that time, I've been stopped from getting out of Mathias Point twice and once coming in because of trucks blocking the road. Another issue would wind up with all these people coming in, is it going to be on the road, riding their bicycles, they're going to be walking? And as been stated many times, these roads are extremely narrow. You put people on them, it only takes one car to swerve, and there's going to be a problem. The car will wind up in the ditch on Owens Road if they're not careful. Have you seen the depth of those ditches? Hell, I got a good-sized pickup truck and that thing would be wrecked. There's just too many people there. I moved here, like I said, I'm from New York, I want peace and I want quiet. That many people coming in, you're not going to keep them in that confined space. They're going to get out, they're going to be on bicycles, they're going to be walking, and there's just no room. There are no sidewalks, there's no bike lanes, there's daily room for cars. I had a whole list of things, but most of them have already been covered, and most of them were all negative. I hope that you choose not to allow this to come into this community. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. All right, that's our list completed. So, this one, I'm going to ask Mr. Dines if there's anybody online that would like to speak.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a...
Yes, please.
Yes, I have a statement from Yvonne Richard. My name is Yvonne Richard of 8421 Cedar Lane, King George. I would like to express my opposition to the Hope Retreat rezoning. This project does not bring anything positive to King George County. It will bring added traffic on roads that are already too busy. It will not bring any real estate taxes because of the church status. Additionally, it will bring 25 years of construction and heavy equipment on already busy Owens Drive. Moreover, this will add stress to the water and sewage system without any profferies being offered. Thank you.
All right. If there are no other comments from the public?
Yes.
Yes, there are.
How many more do we have?
Yes, I'd like to speak.
I'm sorry, I'm...
Please go ahead.
My name's Mike Thir. I'm a resident on Mathias Point, and I just wanted to touch on a couple of points on why I'm not really sold on this idea. When they were going through the presentation, they had the phased events, 1A, 1B, 1C. They kind of just breezed right through that and kind of said it was 24 events, five weddings, and didn't really say anything. And then later, I heard them say, for the events, they're going to be church-related which I come in, you know, I think is great, but... Their comment was made that you could have local churches come in, but it's a lease back to the local, they can lease the space. It's not like they're going to say, oh, well, ex-church, come in, feel free to use my facility for free. They're going to charge it back. And then there was also comments about fundraising in one of the slides. I don't know what the events and fundraising are, so I just kind of want to touch those. And then the traffic lights at Owens and Mathias and Owens and 206, and then at Owens and 301. My kids go to school at Potomac, and they are late to school just about every day, just due to base traffic and the number of people in and out of there. I know they said they're going to do it during off-peak travel hours, but our off-peak travel hours, have you ever tried to go over the 301 Bridge on a Sunday afternoon? I mean, it backs up all the way past Taco Bell from the bridge. It's, what, five miles? So, traffic can be a pain even on the off-peak hours, so thank you. And I just wanted to touch on a couple of points and reiterate those facts.
Thanks, sir. And what was your last name again, Mike?
Thir. T-H-I-R.
T-H-I-R. Thank you.
Gentlemen, my name's Dave Hall. I own the other adjacent piece of property to this project. I hear a lot of things said about construction and how much construction there'd be over the next 20 years. Consider how much construction there would be if by right, these folks have 33 houses built over there. Because I live right next to it, it concerns me more to have 33 neighbors who are going to have individual interests and who probably all have legitimate access to the river, rather than one group of people who wants to work with the community and has shown that it wants to work with this community, who will bring something positive to our county. That's it, that's all. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
15451 Wellington. I'm the other side, the north property line, can take you to some of their property.
Thanks, sir. First, do we have anyone else online?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
I would also like that opportunity.
As would we.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we do have some people online. I will call their names out so they can begin their online comment. First, we'll have, in the order that came up, is the Greg family.
Hello, my name is Betty Grig. I represent my husband Randy Grig and our adult son Daniel Grig. We live at 16186 Bundock Road. My son would be here to speak for himself, but he's just been diagnosed with a severe chronic autoimmune disease. So, if you'll indulge me, I'd like to read his comments. The key points being that he respects the mission of the church, but they have not displayed a similar respect for our community or its protected or irreplaceable wildlife. Little or no benefit to the county, as others have noted at length. I won't rehash that, but I will echo it. The chief goal of the comprehensive plan is to preserve the rural character of the county. A rural community is not playing for a megachurch while well-intentioned do not understand or appreciate that this county and its land is our home, not a resort. Also, I'd like to add, as an individual, we have four children we raised in this county and they went to school here regarding the buses, the condition of the road, the weather influences. There were times when our children were in the public school here that it snowed and the buses would not service Mathias Point families. If we got our kids to school, it was on our risk. So, I wonder how, there's supposed to be a benefit of buses. I echo also the narrowness of the road, the danger of the intersection, both at Owens Drive and Dahlgren Road, as well as Mathias Point and Owens. We live here on Mathias Point. My husband and I both work at the base. There have been times that it has taken literally an hour for us to get from our home to the B gate because of concerns for security. So, there are all kinds of ways that block traffic present a safety hazard, a security hazard, and no ability for emergency services to enter Mathias Point to address the needs either on this resort, which I do echo is oversized for this community. I also believe, as some have said, that I can see that the vision is a good one, but I also believe that there are other places that this could be a better fit. This is too large a development for this community, for our peace of mind, our well-being as a community. Most of us worked hard our whole lives to come here and have that peace. And now, this is a pay-to-play venture where the community will not be welcome. The guardhouse is certainly an indication that this is not open to the public, and if it's rented to other churches, that's a fundraiser, not a church organization. So, there's just too many ways I see that this is wrong. I, too, would love to see this presentation. It was difficult to follow with the slides flashing back and forth. It was poorly written, and it was just read to us, you know? Give us a chance to read it and understand more, but please, say no. Thank you. My son is here. If I may give him a moment?
Thank you, Ms. Grig.
Can my son just speak a moment, please? Quickly, Daniel?
Yes. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm an adult resident of the county, the same as anyone else. I just happen to be in the same room as my mother at the moment. Many people have spoken eloquently on this, and I'd just like to reiterate three key points. Firstly, as others have said, I...
I read that.
Oh, that has been read already.
Sorry.
The long story short, as others have said, is that this is largely a program for the benefit of the church and not to the benefit of the county. And the comprehensive plan of the county has made it abundantly clear that the top priority is the preservation of the rural character of the county. And the need to preserve the priceless, irreplaceable wildlife and open beauty of this land is crucial. It is not a, you know, minor administrative issue to us. It is our lives. We chose to live here and we planned to do so for a long time. And while I respect the mission of the church, I don't feel that that same respect is being extended to our community and to the land on which it sits. We are a rural county, not a playground, and I would urge the board to vote down this motion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for allowing me.
Thank you.
We have another online from Michelle Gill. Please have your comment.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Hello, this is Michelle Gill. I reside at 5285 Kings Highway, and I echo many of the concerns that have been brought forward tonight. I would just like to add that I really believe we should not be talking about rezoning at this stage. By their own admission, they have said that they don't have the financing, they don't have a complete plan. For something of this size, and I work for a government agency on multimillion-dollar projects, I would want to see a detailed implementation strategy plan. I'd want to see a risk management plan. I would want to see a business case analysis report. That should all have been done first before we even begin to speak about rezoning, to see if it's even feasible. Having said that, just... Having said that, just based on what I've seen tonight, this plan, and I'll just echo that it is too large for the county, and it does not support or meet the comprehensive plan. So, I would ask that you take into consideration the ambiguity of what has been brought forward. Thank you.
Next online is Jason Thompson.
Hey, good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm Jason Thompson, I, myself and my family, live directly across the prop, from the property on, at 3515 Matthias Point Road. This project is slated to be, basically at the end of my driveway. I've been with the folks at Hope Church on a couple of occasions, and I think they've put together a good plan. We have some concerns, one is that the project is a very large project, we feel that it's probably too large. One concern that we additionally have is the zoning request. If the zoning planning commission grants the approval for a zoning request to resort community, and whether it's two years, three years, five years, 10, 15 years down the road, Hope Church decides to bail on the project and flip the property to whoever, in whatever investor comes in, that zoning is now in place and we have the potential for a potential Bethpage-type resort, since it's now zoned as a resort community. So, that's a major concern of ours, and I haven't heard it brought up by any other of the residents in the meeting tonight. The additional concern that we have is, we know the churches love to help the community, and we love helping the community herself. What's to stop, and there was a slide previously when the young gentleman was doing the presentation of the uses of the property, that was kind of skipped over very quickly, and I didn't really get to capture all the uses of the property, what they have put in their properties. But what's to say that the church doesn't have something in there that says, "We want to support these addicts that have drug abuse addictions or alcohol abuse addictions, and we want them to come to the resort and find themselves." That's a huge concern. Same thing with, you know, we don't know who is coming and going from the resort and coming into the area from other areas, whether it could be, you know, addicts, or felons, or criminals for some kind of sabbatical or retreat. So, those are our initial concerns, being that we're, if this thing's right at the end of our driveway, and when we pull out of our driveway, this is what we see. And just a quick message, and I'll wrap it up here, to any of our neighbors down Matthias Point Road, I'm sorry if any of our trucks blocked your pathway in and out of the house, apologize. That's all I've got, thank you.
And it looks like we got our last online?
Our last online is Teresa Lunsford.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
And my name is Teresa Lunsford, I currently reside at 631B Hall Road in Dahlgren on the naval base. We do own property on Old Mason Grimes Track, Lot 3, that we plan on building a home for our children. Everybody covered everything politically that I probably would have missed, my husband would normally do this, but he's in Iraq, so, for me, I'm a mom, and my biggest issue is safety, and just like Mr. Thompson pointed out, something that I totally didn't think of, was, you know, what if they do have a retreat for addicts and whatnot? I have kids, four years old, all the way to adult, and my main concern is their safety. My kids love the area, when we purchased it, around four years ago, they love all the wild animals, and I just feel like all of that is going to take away from what everybody wants. We want home, we don't want concerts and extensive traffic. If I wanted that, we would have gone to Frederickburg. But, I mean, I'm just going to keep this short and sweet, I am totally against this, my kids are against this, and I hope you guys vote against it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we do have one more addition, that's Charles Gleason.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I've listened to the Hope Church presentation at least once and twice now. I feel that, and just for background, I have a family that developed real estate in Williamsburg, Virginia, when it was 15,000 people, it's 100,000 people now. So, I know the growing pains that this county is going to be facing in the next 20 years. The big concern are really threefold. One is, as a developer, the imperative is to develop a property with its highest and best use. This property has been around for several years, it was a brownfield development, and now, because of the circumstances, has become effectively a highly valued tax deduction for the Shark family. The second piece is that you'll find that 30 houses and the tax base surrounding that may, for the county's perspective, be the highest and best use in a rural, in a rural county where rural development is being encouraged. The third thing is, I live at 16212 Liberty Road, I am one of the recipients of three flipped cars on the road, and I have replaced five mailboxes because they got hit. I don't see the traffic improving as a result of this, or at least being mitigated. The fourth thing is, I have a concern that there will be people leaving the property as, despite all their best intentions, there is a great deal of hunting going on around here, and every one of us will probably need to increase our insurance for a liability in case something were to happen. That would probably amount to about 1,500 bucks a year, and I don't see any provision for that either. That's all I have to say, I really wish you would consider turning down this and consider in the future, the highest and best use, which is probably a luxury home development. Thank you.
Okay, so, Chris, we're wrapped there. Okay, thank you, appreciate you taking care of that for us this evening, and we are at an hour and 15 minutes of public comment, so unless anybody else has something different, okay?
My name is John Day, I live at 18302 Green Bullard. I just want you to know that traffic is going to be terrible, because I drive a school bus. I'm the King George County Transportation Coordinator, I've been driving a school bus here for 15 years, and yes, I've gotten your children and your grandchildren to Potomac Elementary around 9:00 and 9:15, because of the traffic. And if you think that having 900 people being at this retreat is not going to put a burden of getting your children to school, I hate to see what it's going to do, I really do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, if there is no further public comment, we are going to now close the floor for public comments, and the public comment period is now over, and we're going to turn it back into the planning commission for comment and discussion.
So, Mr. Chairman?
You know, when I got this package, I looked at it and I said, "Oh, I, summer camp and a religious retreat," I go, "This'll be an easy one." So much for what I think. No, but honestly, as I started to read through the package, and as I've heard the presentation given by the applicant, I guess I've got several concerns that I want to express to the fellow board members, just so you know where I'm coming from. First and foremost, it's outside the development area, that means it's inconsistent with the master plan, and you guys have known me for quite some time on this, on this board. What's the point of a master plan if we're not sticking to it? You know, exceptions should be rare and few. Also not happy that this project would require an extension of the water sewer system. My water sewer bill from the, from the folks who run that system already has an awful lot of money in the debt servicing fee, actually more than the actual cost of the water and sewer services I receive. So, asking them to build an extension, if I understand the proposal correctly, is something I'm not in favor of. I believe in the document somewhere I heard it, I saw it estimated at approximately a million dollars. That's a million dollars more debt the service authority would have to go into, I'm not excited about paying for that, for this. I'm a little concerned that it's so close to an existing housing area, not only the residents who live on larger parcels, but we do have a housing area and an apartment complex that are not very far from this, lights, noise, traffic, the whole thing, it's just going to add to the problem. As people have said, the roads in and out of Matthias Point along Owens Drive, even up to where it intersects at Route 301, are not very nice roads, they're narrow, there's no shoulders, there're deep ditches, it's just problematic as it is, putting any more traffic on it at all doesn't sound like a good idea to me. On top of that, the recommending a turn, the V-dots recommending a turn lane, but, but this project's not proposing paying for that into their actual site, nor are they, they've offered up $250 in an escrow account to make improvements at the intersection of Owens and Matthias Point Roads. Whenever they get around to doing that, 250 is not going to cut it, in my opinion. Now, maybe I'm wrong, but I've seen a lot of projects come through here, and they, they're certainly more expensive than that, in my opinion. I'm a little concerned that having between 400 and 900 youths at this camp, not to count the adults, and maybe I should be talking about how many adults will be here, is that it's going to add a burden to our fire and emergency services, folks. Hopefully not to the sheriff's office, but probably so, and that's, I don't see the revenue coming into the county to absorb that. Being right across from the entrance into the naval base is another issue, I, you know, recently retired from there, and I know that the people who run that place are not going to want to listen to the complaints about the noise that comes off the base. Most residents here know that it's a lot better than it used to be, but there's still occasional noise. I guess bottom line for me is, I just don't see the financial incentive for doing it for the county, and I don't see the benefit to the county residents. So, I'm in favor of moving this on to the board supervisors with a recommendation to not approve it.
Chairman Parker, I do have some comments and questions, actually, to the gentleman who had asked if Mount Beltha was a resort. I can speak on that. No, it is not a resort, it is a Christian center, it's a historical African-American Christian center, composed of African-American churches who united so that they could have somewhere to celebrate, to play, to enjoy the beaches, back when segregation was in place. Today, it's a beautiful property in which my church that I attend, we go and we have our annual picnic there, and that's about the extent of it. There is no, there are no amphitheaters or ballparks, there are, there is a marina, well, it's not even a marina, it's just a slip dock, and a facility in which they can dance, that's all it is. There is no hoopla, there's no traffic, it's just an area in which African-American community enjoys. Now, I do have questions. First and foremost, I think it was said that the center would be open to churches, is that correct? To other churches, is that, is that correct?
Yes, sir, you can come down if you like.
That's correct, it would be open to other churches.
Is, and, and you have to excuse me, but I'm going to play devil's advocate here, just no pun intended. When you say open to other churches, is there any exclusion of any other, any religion? Let's say if I was a Muslim, would that be open to a Muslim?
Right, well, let me ask the church.
Sure.
Yeah, it's, it's a difficult question, I think it's clear, obviously, Hope Church is an evangelical Presbyterian church, it's a Christian church, it's based on the premise of Christ being God's son, and so that's kind of guides the mission and purpose and vision. So, I think we would accept an inquiry from any organization and would do some thought process around an alignment with our own personal convictions and missions about that. It's hard to tell you in a hypothetical yes to this and no to that, but we really hoped that as we put this together, we'd be able to a lot of different organizations to use the facility, both local and around the area. So, I'm not trying to dodge your question, but I'm simply trying to say, we obviously would take some discernment around, does the purpose of this organization align with our mission and life and our purpose itself? I don't know if that addresses your conversation.
No, no, that's, that's fair, that's fair. And secondly, have you reached out to any of the churches within the, the Christian churches within the county to say what your intent and what your mission is, what you would bring, or how you would, how you would, I guess, act in brotherly love to, to the other churches?
No, it, we have, we have not, to my knowledge, Grant, you can correct me, simply because we didn't want to get ahead of ourselves, and this was a step that needed to be, we need to go through this step before we could begin fundraising. Someone mentioned online about a plan for funding, you can't go ask someone to contribute to something when we don't own it, and this zoning is a prerequisite to us moving forward on it. Certainly, that, that kind of outreach is consistent with what I think we do, when we knew we had the zoning to accomplish our mission and we actually owned the property, if we got to that point.
Very well, thank you.
You bet.
Could I correct one, one thing? The church has committed to paying for the sewer extension, so that is actually in the proffers, that it pays for both the pump station upgrade that's necessary for it, if any, and the extension of the pipe.
In response to that, and to support Mr. Kendrick, I understand that, that the cost would be absorbed by the applicants for the sewer utility extensions, but I didn't really hear a commitment that it would be exclusively on public sewer and water. In other words, if the lower portion of the site, if the pump station cost proved too great, I didn't hear anything that precluded you from putting in onsite septic or well.
Yes, sir, there is a proffer specifically that says that we will utilize the sewer system. This was one of the earlier discussions, we actually proposed to come in and use septic and well, and after discussions about the general availability of the soils for septic and those sort of things, the decision was made that it would be a better thing for the aquifer and a better, better approach for the area.
I did read it, I just didn't feel like it was precluding any onsite sewage treatment.
I'll, I'll go, I'll, I'll go find it, but basically I'm pretty confident we've included a specific commitment to hooking up to the public sewer.
Thank you, sir. And question for staff, did EMS consider at all water rescue requirements for the proposed use of the water recreation facilities? I didn't see that, they did not, it was not in their letter, I was just wondering if that was a consideration.
Whatever, all I have is what is in the letter.
Okay. So you don't have any conversations beyond what was in that letter to report on?
Uh, no.
Okay. I, I remember that that was a concern in capital improvements that our EMS did not have a boat or staff to strap, staff trained to operate any kind of water rescue. Does the applicant have any position on that and how they would handle safety in the water recreation facilities?
What I can tell you is this has come up as a specific discussion in, inside the church, of course, with children on the site, they want to make sure that safety is part of it. So our proffers, when we got to the personal water craft, basically said none for recreational purposes. That was specifically so that we could reserve the ability to maintain a, a, you know, jet ski or appropriate vehicles that would be there for safety and for any response on the river. So we've had that discussion, but there is nothing currently in our proffers that addresses that issue directly. We'd be happy to include something that is certainly a part of our intention.
Mr. Raji. Okay. Well, I want to go around, before we leave this side of the room, Mr. DeCorto, do you have any questions or concerns, or?
They've been largely addressed. I want to confirm that three, no structures greater than three stories are planned and is that included in the plan?
Prohibition of going over three stories?
Correct.
Yes, sir. And again, I'm going to rush back and double check to make sure those words are in there. I will come back up if they're not.
And one more question for you, sir. What would you say are the benefits to the county of the plan approved, the residents of the county?
Yes, sir. Well, we talked about it at some, and as I listened, I think that people have not understood that the, this use is something that is intended to benefit organizations in the county. The hope is that organizations here, whether they are the, the schools, the, the clubs, the, they would be users of this. And yes, there's a facility charge, just like any church, you know, when you use their meeting space, there's a facility charge. But the idea is that in fact, this would be available to the county. And so, and other concerns that were expressed about benefits, I'm particularly concerned about wildlife. It is a personal element in my mind. And right now, the property is hunted, it won't be hunted anymore, that's not going to impact the other wildlife on it, probably impacts the deer and the turkeys, so. But what we proposed was a benefit to help create a corridor through, through that area that would be consistent with being, being a wildlife corridor. We committed to keeping the lighting out of it. We, you know, that's a personal concern. So another benefit is the protection of the riverfront, the protection of the RPAs, those things that we saw as sort of central to the meaning of your comprehensive plan's vision of the future, which we believe is the protection of almost 98% of this site from, from building. So another benefit is the protection of the site itself. We do believe it has economic benefits to, to the county as well. I talked about the $225,000 from the meals tax, this is something that, you know, you know, I, I heard people saying, maybe it's not enough, I don't know, you know, commercially, it sounds like a good number to me, it sounds like a good benefit.
Do I understand that the operations, the revenue operations would be subject to the hotel motel taxes?
That was, that was what your actual county officials told us when we met with them and asked them what the tax consequences would be. One of the specific ones that called out was meals and lodging would apply because that wasn't a church function here. And so according to your tax officials, yes, that would be.
As you can understand, any economic analysis can't be done unless the determination of where the extent of the tax exemption treatment.
Right. And that's why I qualified it, I don't, you know, I don't want to, they, they were taking the best information we could give them at, at the time and applying it. Obviously, the details will be there as things develop and everything, but I do believe that there's an economic benefit to it as well.
That economic impact, I look forward to seeing that. And finally, do I understand that public access to this site will be restricted?
Yes, sir.
Guests only?
It, it will, though again, the caveat being that organizations can, you know, can apply to, to use the, the grounds. But just as the other property owners around, around us want to make sure that they preserve the security of their sites, and we have in particular to take care of other people's children on that, that site, yeah, it'll be a controlled access site. That's why the guardhouse and the gate at the front, to make sure that we're providing the right protection for people.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Watkins, anything? And just one that we've heard feedback, if you can use the mic, some of the folks online are having trouble hearing us.
Okay. I guess it's working. I really like the plan. I like the mission of the plan, get the word out. My biggest concern is, is just in the wrong area of the county. As everybody stated, I've been down those roads many times. Those roads just can't handle 900 people, 400 people. They're, as everybody said, they're horrible. Deep ditches, sharp turns, getting out of Matthias Road on the Owens, that's a hard turn, even to come out onto, even riding down Owens Road, you can hardly even see Matthias Point coming down the road. You know, talking about buses, you're talking about not school buses, you're talking about, yeah, tour buses. So we, we know what they do in DC, park all over the place, that's what's going to happen out on Matthias Point. You got traffic already backing up on Owens, you already have people walking on Owens from the bigger neighborhood to the Sheetz, to the, to the Walmart. And I know your plan is to keep everybody inside the camp, have the food, have all that, but people want to get out and walk. They're saying, oh, look, there's a Sheetz, let's go get a soda. So they're going to walk down Sheetz, go get a soda, they're going to walk through the neighborhood, they're going to walk down those narrow roads. It's going to happen. It doesn't matter what you, what you do, your, your, your guard check's going to be there, they're going to find a way to get around the guard check. We were all kids, we knew, hey, that dude's right there, let's walk around the other way, he's not there. So, I said, I, I appreciate the plan, I appreciate your mission, what it's about, but there, there may be a better place in the county for this at another time, but at, at this particular location, it's not, it's not the best.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gabriel?
I really have no, I really have no questions or comments, other than say, I think Mr. Kendrick covered everything I would have said.
Thanks, sir, Mr. Caldwell?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? There you go, okay. So I always have a lot to say, I'll try and limit it. So a couple of things, there was a comment that our material is not online, our material is online, our packets that we have before us are up there online, available to all of you, you can download them, you can read them, you can look at them, all that material's there. This situation, the rezoning, where, you know, the property owner and the developer, developer doesn't own the property or have, you know, they don't own it, it's, it's common, right? It's kind of like the cart before the horse, that, you know, they're not going to buy it until it gets rezoned. It's common for the property owner to apply for rezoning, if it passes, then they can move forward, so that's not that uncommon. Let's see, another thing, it's unfortunate that that individual had to be ejected, but she was disrupting our county business, as simple as that. Let's see, so on the project, it is a big project. You know, I, 20 years ago, I was in your, your shoes, there was a similar effort at the end of my road, I was in NIMBY, opened my mouth, now I'm on the planning commission. And so I, I understand where you're coming from, I don't want to be biased, you know, by, by that, you know, and if I, if I challenge my assumptions and my beliefs, you know, and if they are sincere in this plan, you know, what a vision, you know, what, what if it could come to fruition and it could be everything that they dream of, you know, just think of, think of that, and I know you don't want it in your backyard, but, you know, just challenge, maybe challenge your assumptions. So the essence of the project, you know, it, it doesn't quite fit the comprehensive plan. It's, it's pretty clear that the zoning district says do not extend or establish water treatment distribution systems. However, it also says extension of them outside of the district, you know, could commence after a formal comp plan change, so there's some wiggle from there. I don't see a huge benefit to the county. I, I know those roads are narrow, those ditches are deep, trucks and cars and buses end up in them, that's not good. I did have a question for staff, if, if the service area was extended, what would, what would the impact on the community be for the future? Would existing homes have to connect to it? Would new construction have to connect to it only, or would it be for the sole purpose of the resort? The service authority, okay. But, oh, oh, is he?
I think we've got service authority.
Is the service authority online? Okay, well, maybe we could just find out from them.
I believe the only thing we have written is if subdivisions came out of a certain size and they're within so many feet, they would have, they would be required.
Right, so that would, this would not only impact this development, but it would impact the future. So, let's see, all that being said, I, kind of on the fence, kind of on the probably not supporting it fence, but I'm not prepared to make an decision tonight. We have, what, 120 days? Yeah, so, and I think those were all my major points. That's all.
Before we, yeah, before we leave that, I think Chris has the folks from the Water Authority, if we can get traction on that question before we move on.
Mr. Chairman, he was on a little bit ago, but he got off, I just sent him a message to see if he would like to get back on, maybe take that question?
If he does, we can come back to it.
Yeah, we can come back, we've still got, here with Mr. Myers has to say.
Mr. Chair, can I, before, he speaks, correct my statement, I told you I would look.
Yes, sir.
And what the proffers actually say right now, because there was a discussion with fire and rescue regarding the current equipment of, of the county to serve anything above three stories. The total square footage of all of the buildings is limited by the, by the plan, but the, the ability to go above three stories is governed by this, which is if the site plan, these are the individual site plans filed in the future, if the site plan includes buildings over three stories above ground, applicant will coordinate with fire to arrange appropriate fire response, and applicant will provide any necessary design or equipment for such response, if not, then utilized by, by fire. Applicant will provide a supplemental equipped for at least emergencies, informer, that's different, but, so yes, it could be beyond three stories, but only if we provided the fire equipment that was necessary to serve beyond three stories.
Thank you, sir. Mr. DeCorto, do you have any follow-ups to that, or?
We're proving now that individual building size will be limited to 3,500 square foot. Am I recalling that correctly?
Each of the individual buildings is limited to the sizes that are specified in the development plan, and they are different sizes. What you're thinking of is in the proffers, there's a limitation on any retail establishment exceeding that, that size.
Thank you for helping me with that.
Mark?
I think I share with Mr. Kendrick in looking at this in the original state and thinking, wow, this won't be that bad. And then the further I dug to it, the size and scope of the projects, quite large, which gives me a little bit, if, if we were looking at a phase or two phases of it, maybe this is a different look, but looking at a whole thing is different than saying, we're going to do a piece of it and then we come back and look at it, and if there are good, we add on and do different things. Was, I had a couple of questions on maximum stay, is there a maximum stay on how long anyone can stay? It mentioned it on the campsites without restaurant, the rest of it, there was never a, a time limitation on stays?
No, sir, I, I mean, the church folks can correct me if I'm wrong, but because part of this is for summer camps and, you know, children staying for multiple weeks in, in cabins, there's no, there's no limitation like that, but they are all lodging occupants, so there is a prohibition on any residents beyond the three residential facilities that we have.
Okay. The wedding events, it looks like all of your parking is at the top, but your chapel and your amphitheater are at the bottom. Was there parking down there that I didn't?
Yeah, there, there is also in the, in the more detailed plans there, what happens is there can be parking down there for making sure that catering can be serviced down there, making sure that there is accessible parking for handicap and those sorts of things. But the bulk of the, the parking is planned at the top, you can imagine that you'd need electric carts, golf carts and the like to move some of the folks down there.
Okay, are, are you considering this a commercial development?
No. And in fact, it's specifically proffered that it cannot be a commercial development. That's one of the reasons why a concern about subsequent owners of the property would be misplaced, it cannot be used for commercial purposes.
Okay. The current property, I'm assuming it's in land use, is that correct?
I think so, you know, is it in land use currently? The answer is I don't know.
Okay. Well, my next question on how many acres you're going to roll out, that was the next question, so we'll have to find that out. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I, I'm on the fence, especially with the scope and the size of it. If the size was much smaller, I think it changes my view a little bit, but as so, you're giving a large piece. It's a lot, a lot of people on a small road, I agree, those roads are bad out there, but that's kind of where I stand.
I would define it as size, I think I, what's bothering me is I would call it intensity, I think it's too intense. I guess we're saying the same thing, it's too intense for that size of a property in that kind of a neighborhood. I mean, we're being asked, I want to go backwards, number two, we're being asked to forward this with proffers for recommendations. Number two, we're being asked to forward this with proffers for, uh, recommendation for approval. Number one, and this is what I really can't get past, is extending public facilities outside of the primary settlement area. I hate the idea of, of by right division with 30 wells and 30 septic fields. But this scares me more because this will just encourage higher density development to tie into those extended utilities. And I, I really hate to see that. Uh, I, I really can't get past item number one.
I think it just boils down to two things, uh, that one, does it fit within the comprehensive plan? Two, does it benefit county? If you answered those two questions, I think you'll have your answer.
Louis, does the, the proffers that were presented in this differ? Was I reading that a little differently, or have the proffers differed a little from what's in this presentation as to what we saw in the package?
Yes, the proffers that were, uh, left for you were given to us, uh, yesterday. The presentation was prepared before that.
Thank you.
So I don't know if we're going to continue this or not, but if we do, there's, there's another concern I would like to have addressed. In the presentation material that we were given, that I was reading prior to tonight's meeting, there was mention about other uses that might be there other than just, you know, summer camps and religious retreats. There were, by my count, 30 wedding possibilities. I don't know how many people are planning on coming from Goochland up here to get married, but, um, there were also five concert amphitheater events. But the one more troubling to me was the, without mentioning how many or anything, the idea of corporate meetings, outings and retreats, festivals, fundraising events. I realize he just said it's not a commercial activity, but if they don't put people into those facilities and fully utilize it, the temptation is going to be to do those kind of things in order to make money to, to pay for its maintenance and upkeep. So if we approve this, or if the county approves this, you know, the door opens that we can't close back. And I'm, I'm more than a little concerned about that. And it's because of the sheer size and magnitude of the project that I'm afraid that might happen.
And one, one thing, and I'm sorry, um, did we ever get Ms. Patterson, was she online or? Just to get her input, I, I don't, I don't mean to overlook, but I wanted to make sure that, uh, was Ms. Patterson, did she ever check in or? Okay. I just wanted to make sure so we weren't overlooking anyone. So all that said, uh, we, we've had, I think, exactly one rezoning request that's come before us that we voted on the night that it's hit us. Um, and that was a downzoning in Sealston. Y'all remember that, the field with tire pile. But, you know, again, uh, that's not, that's not advocating to extend it or, or push it out, but I'm trying to get a feel for what y'all would like to do from the standpoint of, of, of motioning on this.
I don't want to dominate the conversation, but, you know, if the rest of the board members wanted to have some time to think about it, or to get some personal questions answered and clarified, I have no objections to that. But me, I think I'm ready to forward it on to the board of supervisors with or without a recommendation for approval.
I think that, um, giving it is due diligence. It would be, only be fair to table it and to give it, um, a little more time. I think Heather, how much, how many, how much time do we have as far as?
You have, hello, 120 days to make your decision.
So I think it would be, in, in my opinion, just a little.
While I'm on the microphone, I'd like to clarify that the way the proposal is tonight, as far as the corporate retreats, et cetera, if they are not using them internally and they decided to change and make them commercial operations, that would not be in align with their application tonight. Therefore, they would have to go back and amend their rezoning and their proffers for anything outside of the churches.
So, but if you look at their presentation material that was provided us, the things that I read off are listed.
They.
It'd show up in their slide package, or, or whoever's slide package that was, but it's, it's in the package.
I, I'm sure Mr. Sloan can expand upon what they mean by corporate retreats as far as their churches. But as far as if King George County wanted to go as a, a county corporate retreat, that wouldn't be a commercial use, and that's not what I believe they're proposing here. The other question that came about that unfortunately Mr. Weekly from the service authority was not here to discuss, um, I, I'm not sure, I'm, he might be in bed by now, but, um, it depends on what they actually put in, and I don't want to speak for the service authority. But if you are an existing home, you would not be forced to connect to a new, a water and sewer line. However, if you are a new home and there is availability to you within 250 feet, then you would be required to connect as long as that availability was there for you. If your septic system currently fails, then you would be in the same situation. But if you're an existing home on a drain field in that area, no one's going to make you abandon your drain field and connect to that sewer and water. Same goes for the well.
Okay. So that sort of concerns me a little bit. If we extend the sewer water system beyond the, the, the development area, the, the current development area, then somebody out in the community puts in a new house within 250 feet of that line, then they've got to connect to it.
If the availability is.
Are we going to experience any kind of creep of that system?
I, I would rather Mr. Weekly speak to that. But that, that is the rule of thumb of whether or not we send it to the health department or if we send it to the service authority for approval, is the 250 feet. But that decision is theirs.
And so, and that's what I mean by doing our due diligence and hearing all that. We need to, as far as our questions and our concerns go, I think, uh, we need to hear from them. Just, just my opinion. Uh, we need to hear from them to give it a fair and unbiased, uh, decision. It's just my opinion.
I think the extension of the utilities would be a magnet for additional development. That was my point earlier. And based on that, I think I'm prepared to vote tonight. I mean, we also do some due diligence to the applicant. They may want to revise their application based on what they've heard tonight from our neighbors and, uh, from us. So I think I'd be ready to vote tonight.
I agree with you on the magnet for other development outside. Once you extend that, you're going to have potential for other development. I think the upside for the county is limited with it not being commercial. Tax revenue wise, so I think you're limited there. And really with the intensity or the scope, the size of the project, I mean, unless there's a major revision, I can't see supporting.
Right. Do we want to, do we want to vote tonight, or do we want to defer? Allow time for that, looking to potentially change there?
Well, for the sake of getting it right, I don't know that 30 days and one more meeting is, is a big deal one way or another. All right. So I, I, I can't, I mean, I've already said that I feel like I'm ready to go tonight. But, but I would like to make sure everybody sitting on this board is comfortable with, with having a vote, that they've got enough information to make a, an informed decision. And, you know, it would be nice to hear from the service authority on just what might happen if we go outside of the development area. They might give us better numbers as to the cost of extending the, the sewer and water lines to this project. So I'm ready to vote tonight, one way or another, but I'm also okay if we want to. Anybody here feels like they're not comfortable, I'd be happy to let them get comfortable.
It's not that I'm not comfortable. I just want to give them the due diligence in which they, uh, they should, that they deserve, that they should have. Uh, and I think we should table it, hear from the authorities, uh, and then vote from there. That's, that's me.
Just, just one additional element. Um, I believe, Ms. Hall, tell me if I'm wrong, didn't we have BDOT online? Or did anyone have any additional BDOT concerns or traffic concerns?
I believe Mr. Gagnon was online earlier. Chris, is he still online?
I'll check for you, Ms. Hall.
Thank you.
No, ma'am, he's not.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, so I don't know that anybody has any BDOT concerns, but in the case they do, um, maybe that could be bucketed with the, uh, service authority concerns. I, I guess with that, we've, we've had good discussion, good banner, good, brought up a lot of good topics. Um, kind of getting to that point of the night where I think we need to look for a motion other than to vote tonight or, or put it.
If we can have BDOT and, uh, the service authority at the beginning of next meeting, so we can make sure or get answers from them. And I, I'll make a motion that we table case number 19 dash 08 dash 03 until next month's meeting.
A second motion?
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you.
All right. Whew. Now, on to the next order of business, which is old business, of which I don't believe we have any old business. Next order of business is new business, which I don't believe we have any new business. And that brings us to the next item before the commission is the director's report. And we will, yeah, what I was going to say, we'll, we'll let things settle down a little bit before we get to the director's report.
Do we want to give them a minute to clear out?
Yes.
No, no, we're just, yeah. Yep. We, we won't, we won't have a hearing, but. Right. That'll be a public hearing as well. Oh, yeah. Yeah. I know. I know. It, it has been, hasn't it? It really has been. And it's not a bar where we typically throw people out of, huh, everybody?
All right. Next order of business before the commission is the director's report.
Thank you.
Okay. At the board of supervisors, uh, June 16th meeting, they held the rezoning application for Daryl Herrenstein's investment group, um, in which the board of supervisors voted 401 to remand the application back to the planning commission. So that applicant, um, will be making revisions and coming back before the planning commission again. Um, at this time, I'm not sure of when, because we have not received any updates or revisions at this time.
When is the?
I believe so, but I can't say until I see what they're asking to change.
What would their suspense?
Is this a new application?
It would not be a new application. It's remanded back to the planning commission.
What would their suspense date be for that, Heather, before we need, you know, the drop dead date that they need to get to you?
To get on the August agenda.
Wouldn't that be predicated on whether they have changes?
Um, I believe they have to, they have to send out notices 20 days in advance, so I would say by next week. Roughly next week, I would need that slate.
So, so that was kicked back because of the Mary Washington agreement or lack of clarity on it or something like that?
Yes. So in the applicant's proffer statement, it stated that they had a contract with Mary Washington to construct, um, in which they were unable to produce that contract.
But is that really the purview of the planning commission, or is that county or legal? Is that really us?
The reason why it was remanded back for, uh, Herrenstein and King George villages in regards to the Mary Washington contract in the proffer statement.
You're talking about why the board of supervisors, uh, voted to remand the case back to you for consideration before they considered it?
Well, well, also is verification of that contract or that agreement really our purview?
Well, it's a proffer, and the proffer stated, the proffers run with the land. And the proffer stated that it existed and it did not. And so, uh, under the law, you approved, uh, based on information and belief, a, uh, an application for rezoning based on proffers that were unenforceable because of an impossibility of fact, and you didn't know that. Apparently, it was a material subject based on the tapes and the comments made, which was whether there would be a substantial medical facility of approximately 14,300 square feet. Um, and that it said there was a contract to construct and build, I'm going off memory, and there was not at the time. Later, they came back with a separate contract, uh, to donate the land, but there was no contract to construct and build. The, they can make an amendment, but it cannot be s- material. Obviously, that was deemed by the board. an amendment, but it cannot be material, obviously, that was deemed by the Board to be material, that's up to the Board, and not in compliance with the original proffer made to the Planning Commission, which was there was a contract to construct and build, and so it was remanded to you to see if that was a material change that may have altered either public comment, or y'all's vote, if there was no such proffer. So, what, they could amend their application and come up with a contract, or a different contract, that may or may not be acceptable by majority vote, but that was the reason, was because there was a material change that you did not have before you, and the Board made a specific vote that it usurped the process and your authority to make a recommendation based on a, a material misstatement of fact.
Yeah, based on that answer, I'm cool with it coming back.
A long lawyerly answer, wasn't it?
No, no, it's good.
So, so, basically, they said they had a contract they didn't have, which would have, could have changed the opinion.
That was a very short non-lawary. Much better stated, and that's what I meant.
And, and if, just to expand upon that too, not to belabor, but, but the agreement that was in place, if I remember correctly, was a, was a land transfer agreement, correct, and it was dated much later than we.
Subsequent to, far subsequent to the Planning Commission meeting, held a public hearing and commenting, obviously, I wasn't here, but I looked into it, and I think staff could confirm, there's tapes, and a couple of weeks, I would say certainly less than four, before the Board of Supervisors' meeting, I believe it was two, or one, the applicant did file something called a land transfer agreement. That agreement transferred the land to Mary Washington Hospital and five hundred thousand dollars. If Mary Washington accepted the land after the study period, then, then they owned it. If the Mary Washington did not accept the land, then it went back to the applicant, and they had to give it to the county along with the remainder of the five hundred thousand dollars. The issue was that if Mary Washington accepted the land and the money, and never built, then, so they agreed to amend that then, to say that they had five years, and then it would revert, and it, it began to get, like they were negotiating with, but what the Board said there wasn't, was a contract with Mary Washington Hospital to build a medical facility of approximately fourteen thousand three hundred square feet, and the Board refused, the Board of Supervisors refused to rule and vote on whether or not a subsequent land transfer agreement would suffice as a contract to build, because y'all didn't have that in front of you, and so y'all needed to make the recommendation, and it was possible, it may have had no effect, but it was possible that y'all would have said, if the contract wasn't in place, I would have voted differently, or that the public would have said, if the contract wasn't in place, they may have commented for or against. Maybe some people didn't want a hospital there, I don't know, but I mean, that, the optic was inaccurate, for whatever reason.
Thank you, sorry, I didn't mean to, thank you.
On Tuesday, July fourteenth, the Board of Supervisors did adopt the zoning revision for the sign regulations, as well as the amendment to the subdivision ordinance regarding the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act that you previously heard. On August fourth, they will be hearing the Sedgwick appeal in regards to the developer finishing the roads in that subdivision. No updates.
I'm sorry, Heather, say that one more time.
The Sedgwick appeal, Mr. Galahan failed to finish the roads.
Weren't they on a ninety day clock?
Well, they were, but then COVID happened.
Oh.
And this was the next available schedule, so, that's.
But there's been no, no.
No, no new progress. The, the Platts and the Eastmans have been recorded, yes sir. The Platts and the Eastmans have been recorded, as stated at our last meeting. I'm sorry? To my knowledge, yes sir. You gotta use your microphone.
The clerk, the clerk of the courts kicked back some of the signatures, didn't they?
Not to my knowledge.
Oh, okay.
Next on the item of agenda is the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act review. This past year, our department has been audited by DEQ in regards to our Chesapeake Bay app program. What they do is they come in and they comb through all of our comprehensive plan, our zoning ordinance, our site plans, our development plans, they go out and do site visits, pretty much they check behind us to make sure that we are doing things appropriately. We were found compliant and received the attached approval letter on June eighteenth, twenty twenty. Thank you very much, it was a lot of work, and thank you to Department of Community Development, all of our staff putting in a lot of extra time and effort into, to making that happen, so.
Kudos.
Also, we have an internal promotion of Michael Newchuck, he is now our environmental specialist. Our contract ended with our contract engineer at the end of June thirtieth, and we made the decision to promote within, so Mr. Newchuck will be doing our stormwater reviews. He is fully duly certified by DEQ as well, and he's doing a great job.
Excellent.
And then my usual zoning practice was included.
Thank you, we got lots of zoning practice tonight.
Also, if you haven't noticed, we have a brand new county attorney, Mr. Matt Britton, welcome aboard, we put you to work quickly.
Yes, we're glad to have you. Well, welcome to King George.
Nineteen sixty-five we came in.
Anything else, Ms. Hall?
I believe we have some other business.
I'm gonna read a statement to the commission. I would like to take this opportunity to inform the Planning Commission members that effective November one, twenty twenty, I will be retiring from my position as Director of Community Development for King George County. It's been my pleasure to meet and have the opportunity to work with you on the many matters we have faced in the last three plus years. You are a wonderful group of people who have always engaged to make King George County the best it can be. I admire your willingness to give your time and efforts to the citizens of this county. As we transition into new leadership, I will keep you informed of the impending changes to come to our department. Thank you all so much for your dedicated service to King George County.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Congratulations, and I'm sure we'll, I, I've no doubt you'll come to every meeting still.
Absolutely.
So we'll see you in the audience.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your service, sir. Awesome, congratulations. Any other, other business? Alright, with that, do we get a motion to adjourn? Hold on.
I had it written in red and everything, and I still forgot it. Okay, two special exceptions for Back Porch Winery, as well as Landino Barn, have applied for special exceptions. They went before the Board to decide whether or not they wanted to retain it, or send it to the Planning Commission in effort to not further delay their application because of the, the pause we had to put on on public hearings. The Board has requested to do a joint public hearing, so that these plans can be reviewed in one night. They would like to meet the week of August seventeenth through the twenty first, and the, this exact room is only available on the seventeenth and the nineteenth, so we hope that works for your schedule. They would also like to meet at five thirty, if possible.
They want to meet at five thirty? Do we, how do we? How do we handle, I mean, how do, how do we decide?
I just need a consensus.
Okay.
Of whether you would prefer the seventeenth or the nineteenth, which is a Monday and a Wednesday.
Our last joint meeting went so well. That's kind of a, I'm taking it, that's sort of a.
Of August, yes.
Yeah.
Seventeenth.
Oh, yeah.
Or, or.
Yeah, so Heather, is this gonna be similarly situated to what we're doing tonight, except for with social distancing, but with all of us, or?
Yes, Ms. Dr. Young mentioned possibly opening up this back area with the curtains. Lozinga, so, we, we will work out the details, all I need to know is if you are available on those dates and times.
Are y'all?
I want to go on the record for this, I guess. I don't mind a joint meeting, I think we circumvent the system some, and we've already set a precedent, that the folks that came here tonight develop what they're gonna say, then they get to the Board of Supervisors, and their thoughts and comments are much more put together. And it may come across a different way there. I think when you do it in a single meeting, you're there, you're not there, and it's done, but I, I, I agree. We need to move things along and move them as quickly as we can, especially with the break being here. I, I don't like the joint meeting, I guess we don't have an option, but I, I do feel like we're circumventing a part of the system that's designed to get everybody's thoughts and comments out, and everybody to be able to speak their piece, and we kind of shortcut that.
I, I agree with you, Kevin, however, I think in this, in the times that we're in, the incredible circumstances that we've, we've been in the past four months, I think it causes for us to do special measures. It's the only reason why I would agree with it, but I, I agree with you, processes are in place for a reason.
I think, I think I go back to, go back and forth on it, I mean, I think, like Mr. Kendrick and Mr. Meyer said, I thought going in here tonight that this was gonna be sort of an easy peasy thing, and I didn't, I didn't figure that there'd be a lot of passionate concerns about it until my phone started blowing up this afternoon, and then obviously the meeting, but my, my other concern would be, we get in there, and we got two wedding venues, which we've already seen wedding venues can be either really favored, or, or really disfavored, so I, I don't know if we want to get into something and, and have a bunch of people, like.
If, if I might add, that the Board really went back and forth on, you know, what was the best route for the applicant and the county, and not bypassing the Planning Commission, because I think that they realize you are important, and they don't want to bypass you by any means. The other thing that I would like to mention is that these two wedding venues appear to be very straightforward, I don't have any opposition, my phone is not ringing beforehand, as other wedding venues have done in the past, so I think that they really struggled with that decision, and that they kind of came to a point of, we need to help these small businesses get back on track after COVID nineteen, as well as making sure that they follow the process, and this was the compromise that they came to.
From a legal perspective, Mr. Britton, do we, are we setting, or are we engaging in bad precedent by doing this, or?
Joint meeting?
Correct.
No, the code allows for a joint meeting specifically. The decision whether or not you, the precedent is entirely up to you, based on empirical data. I believe that some of the Board, the Board members indicated that, what?
You're talking into the wrong piece.
I'm talking in the wrong piece?
Yeah, the head side.
Oh, yeah. That was what I know, I told you I was old. The Board members, as I recall, you could pull the tape, I forget exactly who it was, and probably wouldn't say if I remembered, but expressed reservations about doing it themselves, saying that the last time they had done it, it didn't sit well, and they weren't gonna do it again, but now they wanted to do it again, so I think that, that would be entirely up to you, and that's a, a political decision for the Board of Supervisors, and an administrative decision for you under the code, but the code of Virginia specifically allows joint Board and Planning Commission meetings, it's not just our local rule or something, so there's no negative precedent from a legal perspective, no. I, I think that the process becomes blurred, and they're, and they're generally subject for legal attack, but not because there was a joint meeting, it just becomes less manageable, there are more, more things going on.
Yeah, so the, the, that last go around, so, the Board has a different composition.
Thank God.
And, and that, yes, and that last.
Because I didn't like meeting with them either, so you can pass that back to them if you want.
And, and that was a rezoning, and it was a ham-fisted attempt, you know, with the expectation that we were gonna see a rezoning and approve it, and we didn't, and the outcome was more positive for the county. I don't think this is the same case, and we are in different times, and why don't we just? End all of branch, go and do it?
I, I don't think it's our decision anyway.
Yeah, I think it's our.
I just think we had a slow, clunky meeting that lasted till midnight, and then they left, and we were stuck there.
So the bottom line is, which dates?
I'm good, I'm good either one.
There's an interesting.
Thursday, seventeenth, Tuesday, is that right?
Your bylaws don't allow you to go past midnight, their bylaws allow them to vote for fifths, so.
Actually, we just changed.
If you're there, you'll have to stop at midnight.
We caught up, we, we ended, we voted down to ours at eight thirty.
They, they learned their lesson.
A Monday and a Wednesday? Wednesday? Wednesday, the nineteenth? Okay.
Yeah, five thirty.
I will say they are open to meeting later if needed, but they would like five thirty. What works for you, Mr. DeVries? Six o'clock? Can everybody else do six o'clock? Alright. Alright, six o'clock now, seventeenth or nineteenth? Wednesday the nineteenth. You got it, I'll be here.
And Heather, this will be the only business, those two.
Those two will be the only business, to my knowledge.
Except for one major rezoning.
An extra, yes, so it won't fall on a Planning Commission meeting night, and it won't fall on a Board meeting night, this is a separate night altogether, so you will meet the second Tuesday in August, and again for the joint meeting.
We gotta make up for our missed payments for all the other month.
Yeah, that's right.
That's right.
We do. We, you'll, you'll have Hope Retreat. Hope Retreat? Do you have Hope Retreat? Possibly, maybe, Herrenstein, and Hop Yards revising their preliminary plan, making small changes. No increasing of lots, I'm not gonna go any further down the rabbit hole than that, but anyways, that's what's slated tentatively on the agenda for next meeting.
Any other, other business?
I think, I think I'm done.
Brad, you want to retract that retirement? You want to retract that retirement statement? Okay, alright.
I make a motion, or adjourn?
Motion's been made. This motion's made and seconded, all in favor? Alright, now I have to read some legalities. Adjournment, this meeting is hereby adjourned to the next regularly scheduled meeting on August eleventh, twenty twenty, at seven PM. That meeting may be held by electronic means and remote participation only, and may be closed to the public being physically present. All citizens are encouraged to participate in advance or during the meeting by electronic means as provided by the county.